Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome back. Welcome back, staff and commissioners. This is the final day, I think, of our budget prep work, budget review, whatever we're calling it. So, thank you. So, good morning, everybody. Thanks for all of you, anybody that's watching on YouTube or Facebook. So, we'll start the meeting off. Tom or Lori, you got anything to announce?
Okay.
All right. Well, then, we will hop into your first presentation of the day, which is CIP. So, you do not have anything in your binders for this, but you should have three handouts at your seats. One is just a normal PowerPoint presentation, and then you'll have two financial tables, one that looks like this, and one that's much prettier and more exciting with a lot of red on it, that looks like this. So, you do not have that at your...
One on your left hand.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay. Ooh. That one. Thank you. Okay. Well, after that little moment of excitement where I thought I was going to fall on my face in front of you, we will get started. So, um, just a reminder of kind of what we're talking about today. We are actually talking about a five-year program, your capital improvement program, but only one year of which, 2022, is actually going to be included in the adoption, the budget adoption resolution that you'll pass later this year. So, what we'll do this morning is we'll talk about the process. How did we get to this point? We'll get into the facility and drainage projects that we're going to propose. Then, Mr. Packer from Public Works will come up and walk you through the road and bridge side of the capital improvement program, and then I will come back up to regale you with how we're going to pay for all of it. So, just a reminder of the purpose of the CIP. This is essentially similar to what we heard about yesterday with the Technology Review Board. It is a program that allows us to anticipate capital needs. So, you do have a policy. You may remember that we referenced it during your February workshop. That policy defines what a capital project is. And here at the county, I think we're maybe a little different than how other jurisdictions operate because we focus primarily on building and facility. So, you'll see that a capital project is a project that helps maintain, improve, or expand county assets other than, so this is not a part of the CIP, heavy equipment, vehicles, operating equipment, office furniture and equipment, or software. And I think that's a big change from where other places are. A lot of places, software or those large systems may be a part of their capital improvement program. Further, our policy says that in order to be a capital improvement project, it either is new construction, expansion, renovation, or a replacement project for an existing asset that has a total cost of at least $50,000 over the life of the project, or it is a major maintenance or rehabilitation project for an existing asset and has a total cost of at least $25,000 in an economic life of at least five years. And so, you'll see a number of these major maintenance projects come up as we go through the discussion today. So, again, as I said, this tries to emulate what TRB is. Actually, TRB tries to emulate this process because I guess this has been around first. But what we try to do is we try to identify needs across the entire organization as a matter of fairness. And then, we try to prioritize all of those needs relative to each other for the county. We try and fit those into your budget, and then, of course, just as your budget is a way by which you communicate priorities to the community, the capital improvement program allows that to be done in a slightly different way. So, all of this work is done by the lovely folks listed on this slide, most of whom are here in the audience. And this year, I want to say in a special thank you because, just like you, trying to do all your day-to-day work, these guys were doing this work, trying to put up a program, which is a pretty large program in terms of the number of projects, one of the largest we've seen. And they did this all on top of COVID, so my sincere thanks to them. And I would point out that I am the committee chair by policy, the CFO is, but I am advocating strenuously to get that love passed around so that you don't have to hear from me every single year on this. So, see if I can talk everybody into that. And I know the room's loving that I just said that to you.
We're okay. We like you talking to us.
Yeah, okay. I almost believe you. So, of course, though, with any committee, the real work gets done by staff who assemble the information that the CIP committee reviews in this lovely binder. That's not, and we read and review every one of these. And then, that work is also put into your budget. And so, none of that is easy, and so, my huge thanks to these folks. So, getting into the process itself, as with any budget, it starts with requests. Valerie Castor on the facility side reaches out either late in the prior year or early in the current year and says, "Tell us what your needs are." And she and the team and project services coordinate to put together cost estimates that we then use to use in our discussion and to put in what we give you here. And so, that information is packaged, like I said, in this binder. Each member of the CIP committee gets that, and then, we spend several meetings going through all of this information, trying to understand where we may have gaps in knowledge that we need to fill in, and then departments will come in and help us. And so, that information is then put together, and we then prioritize it as a CIP committee. So, there are 13 weighted criteria, meaning that if it's public safety, that score is going to have a little more weight than, say, cost savings, just because of the nature of what it does. So, every CIP committee member goes through and scores every project on these 13 criteria. We then aggregate that information and categorize it into four categories. And I'm going to maybe ask you to highlight this slide because this is going to be a handy reference because this is going to basically be how we talk about all of the projects going forward, these four categories. So, category one means that it is a high priority project. It needs to get done, and it needs to get done now. So, that means it goes into year one of the capital improvement plan. So, this will be the type of project that you see in 2022 that we're proposing for your next year's budget. It also, though, includes preventive maintenance schedules because we know it's important to stay on top of our projects, or else we suffer for that in the long run, and it's more costly. Category two is something that is important, but it's maybe not urgent, or maybe we still need a little more definition to it. And so, that category two then goes into the second and third years of the capital improvement program. Category three, then, are things that are on the horizon, but there's a lower sense of urgency. Maybe it's not as critical for public safety. Maybe it's not as critical as an overall commission goal. So, those go into years four and five of your capital improvement program. And then, finally, category four are things that are watch list programs. So, those are things where we don't want to kick them out of the CIP. We still think they have merit. We just don't have enough information to know that now is the right time to do it. So, that committee basically prioritizes and assigns things to category, and then they turn it over to finance to basically go and try to figure out how to pay for all of it based on where those things fall in the categories. And so, then, we try to assign those things to years and try and keep bonding in mind, try and keep pay as we go as the preference, and we try and juggle all of that. And so, then, we take all that information and we ship it back to the CIP committee, and the CIP committee says, "Yes or no, we like this. Let's shuffle it around." Eventually, we come to consensus, and then, that leads us to where we are today, where we are presenting to you what we think is a good start for the capital improvement program for next year. Now, as I was going back and putting together this PowerPoint for you today, I realized just how important this day is because last year, what we presented to you and what actually got approved in the CIP were very different. So, it is clear, I just want to give you reassurance, that what you say today is taken seriously, and we'll go back and factor that in. But this gives us at least a month. This is a sneak peek for you at what would be in the recommended budget. So, this gives us a month for us to make adjustments based on your direction before it gets out of staff. So, hopefully, we will use today to get some of that feedback from you or for you to ask questions so that we can get information to you and respond accordingly. So, then, this CIP, it'll be a five-year CIP, but it'll be recommended to you as a part of the recommended budget on July 14th, and then, this CIP process follows the same thing your normal budget does. So, with that, if you have glasses and don't have them on, I encourage you to get them because we're going to start looking at this sheet. And I have my glasses with me, so hopefully, everyone can bear with me. So, we're going to start, and we're going to work our way through categories. So, just to orient you to this slide first before we jump into the details, this is a table that shows the name of the project and then how much we propose, including in a CIP for a given year. Now, you will see asterisks out the wazoo on here. If there is a single asterisk, that means that it has already been in a prior CIP. It has already been blessed and endorsed as a project. We're just figuring out where to fund it in this proposal. If you see two asterisks together, that means that it is going, it is proposed to be at least partially funded with bonds. And that is what this table will show you. The second column here gives you details also on how much is going to be bond funded or cash funded as it is relevant. So, the first thing we're going to talk about, then, is drainage. So, this year, there are two drainage projects for consideration of the commission. Typically, we're used to seeing D-21 only. So, D-21 is what we know as the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project. Historically, this has been at about $500,000. Just as a reminder, this is a joint city-county project, actually even with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And so, it includes the Big Ditch, the Wichita Drainage Canal, a series of pump stations, and various related infrastructure. It has been in place really since, like, floods in the late 1950s, so this thing is not young, but it is obviously critical to keeping our operations going. It has 100 miles of certified levee, 50 miles of connecting channels, 150 drain diversion structures, and basically, it moves water around Wichita. And if we had loss of that certification, the ramifications would be severe in terms of costs to property owners in terms of their property insurance. So, we know that this is something that has to exist into the future in perpetuity, and so, it's important that we maintain it. So, while I said it has normally been $500,000, that has been to maintain the Big Ditch portion, there's actually two additional projects now that are included in and driving this $800,000 figure that you see in 2022, and then, the enhanced cost over the rest of the life. So, those include, those additional projects include the canal as well as pump stations. And so, that brings us up to about the $800,000 figure. We have lots of good details from the city on what exactly is included in this. I know that our Public Works team has been involved in this discussion and is supportive of this. We actually already have deferred increasing this amount the last couple of years when we thought we were in austere budget times. Now, we're even in more austere, but we simply don't believe that it's good to wait. So, the committee has endorsed increasing the cost share amount to go with this project. So, that's D-25. Then, there's D-21. This is a project that has been often on the CIP over the years, and this is drainage southwest of Hayesville. This is a project that, where timeliness is of the essence, and I can ask Mr. Weber to speak, or Mr. Packer, speak more directly to that if necessary, but this would fund $125,000 next year and then $600,000 the following year. Because this is drainage, it is not eligible for the sales tax, the road and bridge sales tax that we normally fund smaller projects like this out of. So, then, excuse me, we move into more typical facility-type preventive maintenance schedules to replace roofs and replace parking lots. And of course, for both of these, we've had plans in place for some time. Those continue to be revised each year as a part of the capital improvement program, and that comes to the committee. And basically, this is just, again, maintaining existing assets, which the committee felt was a high priority. So, then, of course, everyone's favorite thing to talk about, outdoor warning sirens. So, this capital improvement program includes $110,000 each year to actually replace or add new sirens. So, again, our capital improvement program doesn't do just normal maintenance. It actually replaces or expands existing assets. So, that's why this is included for that amount each year. Then, and I will defer to Tanya to specific questions.
Can I ask something?
Yes, sir.
How do you want to do this? You want to ask by...
Yes, please enter.
So, and Jim, you might know this better, but I see things where the nationwide warning system, because everybody's cellphone has the warning on it, and are they focusing less on physical sirens than this?
So, I'm not actually your subject matter expert on that. That'd be Rusty, who's not here.
Okay.
But I can tell you that in many communities are moving towards sort of standardizing or governments taking over. You know, we have text messaging, and I get warnings from two different weather applications.
Yeah, me too.
It's constant. So, that's a, the discussion, I think, that the committee is having is, is it time to think about moving towards that and getting away from maintaining this siren system, which is only designed for you to hear if you're outdoors? And the way we build houses now in newer subdivisions, especially in airport zones, they're so soundproof that you can't, I know you can't hear anything. So, that's kind of a constant struggle, but it's, that's why Lindsay's saying it's our favorite thing to talk about. It always gets a lot of conversation in the committee.
It does, okay. All right. Thank you.
There are at least two members of the committee who would dance jigs if we didn't do this anymore, so. Certainly understand the desire to have them for outdoor warning, but yes, you're right, there are a lot of alternatives to get that same information. Okay, so, I'm sorry, are there other questions before I jump into the next one? I apologize. Okay. So, the next project, then, is the district court, DA, and county admin remodel. So, I know that Tanya and I think Tom were part of discussions with you about talking about alternatives to a county administration building. So, what you'll notice is if you look throughout this presentation, this is the only time you'll see that reference, that large admin building is not included in this CIP. This instead is based on trying to basically remodel existing space with the assumption, of course, that elections moves out into its own facility and frees up space in the historic courthouse. It takes into account some of the remote work options that you've heard about from CDDO, and so, basically, it would remodel space in this building, space in Munger, space in the historic courthouse over the course of several years to try and eliminate the need for that brand-new building or that brand-new location. So, I can take a moment and pause if there's any questions or discussion about this and maybe ask Tanya to be on cue. Oh, I'm sorry, I dropped the ball. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I guess I'm just concerned that we are not considering an admin building of any type in our CIP right now. We've seen what years of austere budgets have done this year, and we're paying the price for it. If we're not proactive on this and looking at the future, we're just kicking this ball down the road, and commissions of the future are going to be in the same boat we're in today, trying to figure out what to do with pay for our employees. So, I think we're being penny-wise and pound foolish. I understand what impact is on our budget right now, but we're going to kick this down, and another commission's going to be sitting here saying, "Hey, you guys didn't do your job back then," just as we're saying it for previous commissions when we're looking at pay and so forth. So, I've got concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Chairman. It sounds like we're going to be asking questions as we go. I was writing all my questions down, so I'm going to have to go back to the beginning here, but on this particular line item, number six, you have nearly $1 million in '22, and then, you've got a couple of years with nothing, and then, again, a pretty big jump in '25. Can you explain, what's the plan? I assume that the short term is remodeling things we know about in this building that we've already talked about pretty much at length, but what's the trigger there in '25?
Honestly, I think that is the move of our, like, finance functions out of this building and into Munger, and then, a shift of other things, too, to try and create that additional courtroom space here in this building that would be necessary. And so, my understanding is that is not quite as urgent necessarily at this moment based on what we know about the courts, but of course, state action to fund a lot of additional staff or anything could push that to happen sooner.
Okay.
But frankly, I don't want to move, so I put it in the outer years.
I know we haven't gotten to it yet, but it's relevant to this question. I assume if the election office, it's not in this, is it moved, is it already funded adequately so we don't need to worry about talking to the CIP for that right now?
I don't necessarily know that it is funded adequately because I don't know that we know exactly where it is going, but if you recall, last, in the 2021 adopted CIP, we did take that $3 million that had been moved over from the Ronald Reagan building remodel and put that aside to be used toward a building. Tanya, do you have anything you want to talk about on that? Okay.
So, there's three, is it $3 million right now that's saved for that project?
Yes, that's what's set aside for that and is already funded.
I hate to go backwards, but I do, since we're doing it this way, I guess I would ask, on number one, do we know whether this is still even Steven with Wichita, they're doing 50/50?
It is.
So, these numbers are really basically their numbers as well?
Yes.
And then, issue with Hayesville, again, I don't know what the plan actually is in Hayesville. I know we've talked about this at length, but to see this on the CIP, I guess, is a little surprising since they didn't know we actually had any decisions or any plan to do something out there.
So, I guess you have an option here. I have a map we can throw up maybe at the end of all of this, and we can kind of, I think that one's a little bit, that's a five-minute conversation, if you don't mind waiting, maybe like get through all this.
That'd be fine. I'll just say, in preparation for that, all I knew about was there was a proposal for a benefit district that, as far as I know, was turned down by the people. And so, beyond that, I don't know what other plan, what other plan might be out there. So, I guess I'm, I need to be briefed on that.
I think there's a lot of, a lot of questions probably from, Commissioner Lopez has been with us on this since she's been in, but we need to bring your rest of you upstate.
Thank you very much.
We'll wait till the end.
All right.
Can I share, do you have other questions before we...
Yes, Commissioner Lopez.
I have a question. How long have we been talking about a new building, a new admin building?
Well, I think most recently, we started again in 2013. That was when we had a refresh space study, but it's been on the horizon for years and years and years.
Quite some time.
Yes.
Okay, I guess remodeling I see as a lot cheaper of an option this year after we get through this past year and really can kind of get on a better path. I would love to see that being brought up, but I think the remodeling, getting things under control now for much less than tens of millions is probably, makes the most financial sense to me. So, I like this plan. Thank you.
So, can I...
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I'll just add, you know, the whole discussion with our sheriff, our DA, the court system, you know, space challenges are because we have more people going through our courts, more people in our jails. When we look to see how to get people out of those systems, will we need as much space? And so, I wonder, when we start to shift our focus to a rehabilitative mindset, a restorative justice mindset, will we need all of that extra space? And so, that's kind of what, you know, when we think about millions and millions of dollars in expansion of our courts, expansion of our buildings, is that really how we should be spending our money, knowing that we're just perpetuating a system that really isn't working? And so, that's where I'm coming at from this topic. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. We will hop, then, down to main courthouse chiller rebuilds. So, this is something that you saw last year and was partially funded, I believe, last year, well, actually, in the current year. So, we have two chillers, both of which have more than 40,000 hours of work, and it is recommended that those get rebuilt at 50,000-hour intervals to extend the useful life expectancy, and so, that's why you see about $160,000 there. Now, this is the first project of several that will happen here, kind of on this courthouse campus, and so, we would intend to package as many as we can into a bond-funded project and try and capitalize on these very low interest rates to try and help do this work a little more quickly than maybe we otherwise would be able to. So, then, looking at the main courthouse cooling tower, I know this is something that's near and dear to all of our hearts as we come into the summer, and we all like air conditioning in this building, but it is a 20-year-old galvanized cooling tower, and it has structural support beams that hold that tower in place, and there is some decay and rust that's creating instability. So, we feel like this is probably a good thing to invest in here pretty soon. Then, next, you'll see the adult detention facility lock replacement, additional cameras, and video system update that Commissioner Howell foreshadowed for us yesterday. And so, you will see that altogether, these projects total about $987,000. And so, what would happen is that we would replace the cell door locks in the six remaining housing pods that weren't included in the last upgrade, so that would be about 296. And then, we would also add 14 cameras to seven direct-style housing units that would provide better coverage of day rooms and reduce blind spots. And I know that the sheriff talked about how that system can help him with his management, especially with his staffing. So, then, the final item listed on this slide in category one, we do have a slide two of category one, is the adult detention facility secondary domestic water mains supply. So, basically, what this would do is connect the jail to another water mains supply off of Central Street that would provide a secondary source of domestic drinking water. And of course, as we talk about preparedness and all of these things, these are items that I know that Tanya already has on her radar as potential things that we could maybe use some infrastructure funding out of ARPA to pay for, but we'll just have to see how that goes. So, then, we get to the second slide of category one, and we continue with adult detention facility work. And this is the electrical busway. I know we spent quite a bit of time talking about this last year, but basically, what this would do is relocate the transformer that's on the outside of the facility to being immediately adjacent to the switchgear. And now, I'm going to say words that I don't understand, but there are experts here to come and talk about it. And so, it would eliminate 520 linear feet of busway and leave only 90 linear feet, which apparently reduces your exposure potentially to maybe being shocked, which sounds not fun. It also would remove it from being under the water supply and drain lines, which I think is a pretty critical component and is what really spoke to the CIP committee because, of course, water and electricity do not mix. So, if there are any questions on that, I'm going to step away and ask Andrew or Tanya to come up here and speak to that. Okay.
Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Chairman. I thought this was a discussion we had last year, and I thought we already approved money for relocating the change in the orientation of those lines.
I, we did approve it as a part of the long-term CIP, but because we were trying to just do only the most basic necessary projects in the 21 CIP because we didn't know what COVID was going to do, this is one that was slotted for next year, and so, it will remain in next year's CIP. But you're right, we did spend a lot of time talking about it last year.
Yeah, I won't go back there again. Thank you.
Works for me. Okay, so, then, a new project is the adult detention facility exterior light poles and fixture replacement. And so, you'll note that this is going to be cash funded, even though it's a part of the adult detention facility, again, because it goes back to the useful life of these items. And so, this project would replace existing exterior light poles that basically have rust and deterioration to the point that there is some fear that those could fall onto public sidewalks or streets, obviously creating safety concerns. And so, it also would replace the light bulbs with an LED feature, so it would be more cost-efficient. So, then, we move to two comm care items. These are both refreshed from what you saw last year, but same general concept. from what you saw last year, but same general concept. So the first is the Community Crisis Center. And so as Joan had outlined a bit the other day, this is intended to design and build a new facility that meets current and future needs of the Crisis Community Center, or Community Crisis Center, excuse me, Substance Use Center of Kansas, or SAC, and the Sedgwick County Assessment Program, which we generally call Scope. So that number has been refreshed to 15 and 1/2 million. It does include a land purchase, and this would be proposed to be funded with bond funding. And Commissioner Dennis, I think I saw your light go on.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to anything dealing with this. I'll make sure everybody understands that. But it kind of surprises me that we know that it's going to cost 15,495,222. I've never even seen a plan. I don't know what the scope of it is. I don't know who else is going into this facility. I don't know how we're going to staff it. I don't know a whole lot of things. And to know that we're going to need that much, and then whatever peer housing is, I don't quite know what that is, for another 599,607, I mean, we're getting pretty specific, and I don't have any details to get anywhere close to specific. That's the first half of my question, and while you're up there, you might as well answer the second half. Can we use this new recovery plan funding in order to be able to do this?
I'll take a swing at the first half of the question, and then Lindsay answer the second half. But the Community Crisis Center that is in the CIP plan is based on information that we got from a study that the community did, the county and Ascension Villa Christie paid for a couple of years ago, and that helped us look at gaps in the, you know, what resources are available in the community to address individuals in behavioral health crisis, and what do we need, and what do we project that we need. And so that information went to architects. They worked through the typical process to design a building, because we know that if we want to make behavioral health services better in the community, there's been a lot of talk about a campus setting and bringing lots of different resources together, and that's important. But the centerpiece of that is going to be the Community Crisis Center. And what we know is that the Community Crisis Center that we have on North Main is not adequate in size to deal with the issues that we need. And so, and the other thing that we know is that, we talked yesterday a great deal about the staffing issues that we have. Right now, we've got crisis services in multiple locations. And so if we can bring those locations together, we'll be able to utilize staff more efficiently, and that will help offset some of the staffing concerns that we have. And so this plan is to bring together the Community Crisis Center that we have on North Main, and then the Scope Facility that we have on, next to the Juvenile Complex. And we would bring those different levels of service into one setting, so that we can use staff across that different setting. It helps expand the services that SAC provides related to sobering and detox, and it does include space for medical detox, because we know that's an important component of any kind of a ongoing future Community Crisis Center. So the reason that we've got specific numbers and information is because we worked with architects to give us a plan for this one piece of any future expansion. But the Community Crisis Center is going to be the center of any kind of a behavioral health response that happens. And so we worked with an architect to give us information based on that. And so it would be a facility that included everything that we've got at 635 North Main, everything that we've got at 1910, 1900 East Morris, and then expand to include additional detox beds for SAC and medical detox.
So this is just for Sedgwick County employees? This doesn't take into account anything like we saw down in San Antonio, where we've got a campus with a whole lot of different providers that are all servicing. This is just, but are we looking at having enough property then to be able to co-locate some of the other nonprofits?
There are additional plans, there's plans for additional, there are conceptual plans related to an additional facility that would address some of the social service needs as well. The county's responsibility has been, and I think probably will be in the future, related to the crisis services that comcare delivers, and that the, and the Community Crisis Center services that they deliver in coordination with SAC. We know that to deliver the best service, we're going to need additional social service entities in the vicinity to be able to help with some of those other services that comcare and SAC don't provide. And so I think the plan is that someone else would be able to come alongside with that additional facility.
Very good. Thank you. What about, Tom, you going to answer my second question?
Well, actually, I just want to chime in on the first one. I know we can talk about ARPA, too, but you've hit the nail on the head with where we're at with this overarching project. And this is a big piece of a puzzle that the commission and the community need to piece together for mental health. It clearly is not, shouldn't stand alone, won't stand alone. There's going to be other services that dovetail into this. The private sector is involved in discussions, but you've hit the nail on the head of where we're at in this process right now, which is, now that we've got the crisis center designed and actually a cost to it, and some dirt expense for somewhere, now what else goes into this? How does this all now fit together as a better system moving forward? And that is the piece that remains that the commission needs to get an update on and hear about, which is, I think the intention is to bring Mental Health Coalition in and kind of flush this out over the next couple of weeks, so we can begin to answer your first question, which is, what's the overarching plan of this matter? With ARPA, I'll let Lindsay go. We just got directions and rules yesterday, and she's read a lot more of them than I have, so I'll let her take a guess on your second question.
Lindsay, before you go there, I just add that in this conversation on this potential campus, there's obviously, I mean, there is some private, private money interest, as well as the nonprofit social, because the crisis that we have is, thanks to a lot of talk about it, has garnered some interest in private, private dollar donations to help get stuff going. But, you know, we're not, we're not at that finish line yet either. But just, I'm just adding that. I'm also, Commissioner Howell, had a question on this or on the ARPA?
Go ahead, let her answer the question first of all. I'll ask my question after.
Okay. So unfortunately, I have read the rule not fully, because unfortunately, I was working on this presentation. But what I would tell you is, right now, the focus is on services. And so I think we're still going to need some clarification. And the Treasury did a webinar yesterday, and they said there will still be more FAQs that are coming out, and they're encouraging people to submit questions. And so that is something we can submit a question about, is, does something to expand service, does the infrastructure to increase service qualify as a service? Or could there potentially be other funding, because we know there's another actual bucket that was in ARPA dedicated to mental health and substance use? And so there may be other opportunities, even if it's not our direct allocation, there may be other ways. And so we are going to spend quite a bit of time trying to dive into that and answer your question, because that would be an excellent source of funding for this project.
Yeah. Good. Thanks for that update. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So trying to understand your asterisks on this chart. So
Good luck.
15 and 1/2 million dollars, this wasn't even on our CIP list last year, is that correct?
So it was in this discussion, and then we moved it to the watch list, because we were not confident that the figures that we had at that time really would address all of the issues that had been discussed. And so you, if you remember, actually, last year, the number was closer to 12 million. After it went back and revision, it went through revision, that Tim talked about, we have this updated figure now. And so that's why it was on the watch list last year. It wasn't actually funded in this year's CIP.
And I agree with Commissioner Dennis on this. It seems like there's a lot of specificity to this number. And to be honest with you, we've had very little discussion as a commission on this topic. And in fact, I understand the Mental Health Coalition probably is way ahead of maybe everyone else in the community on this topic. But as a commissioner, that's expected, expected to support a budget that provides this type of funding, I find it a little bit disappointing that I don't seem to have any awareness exactly what the plan is. I know we need something, obviously, but again, as I mentioned, I think it was yesterday, I think that this community needs to be asked for consideration of revenue stream. And that revenue stream probably should include some money for some capital, at least on the front end, and possibly some operational dollars going forward. We don't have a plan. To think we're going to fund this out of our existing revenue and our existing budget going forward, I don't think that makes sense to me. We can bond this, we might get a building, but I think that doesn't really solve this problem. We don't have a plan on how we're going to operate this building. So again, the strategic plan, the long-term vision, the comprehensive strategy on how we're going to do this has not been clear. And I think that the commission, again, I don't know that I mind this on the CIP list. I think that obviously, this is by faith, we know we have to do something here. But I don't know that we're ready to pull a trigger on anything until we have a, I guess, a community, a community discussion on a revenue stream. And if the community wants to get behind it, then I think we can do something extraordinary. But if the community doesn't want to get behind it, then I think we have a challenge that may, again, to build a $15 million building, and you talk about some private capital going into this as well, maybe it's $20 million, maybe it's more than that, I don't know. But how are we going to operate this if we don't have a revenue stream that's identified on the front end? So again, this is, it's probably good to have this on this list, but I think we are very, very short as policymakers from being able to actually pull a trigger on this type of a project until we actually have a much more thorough discussion by, you know, by commission on how we're going to do this long-term. This is, I don't mind this on this list here, but bear in mind, this is more than 50% of our CIP list for this year, for this type of projects.
Well, let me just say, the Community Crisis Center, as articulated a little bit by Tim, that was going to happen regardless of the, of a potential campus, or potential the coalition, all their talks. We're going to have to do something on this anyway. And it's basically staffed today with existing operating, operating expenses. So this was going to be a part, if it's a big part of a big campus, a San Antonio-type thing or not, this was, this was on the radar, from what I understand. So.
Well, with all, okay, so with all due respect, again, if there's going to be a much larger solution to this going forward, don't we want to know that before we simply take a baby step on the comcare, on the comcare and Community Crisis Center, when we have a much larger discussion potentially that needs to happen? To me, this is almost, it's a small part of the big picture. Even though it's $15 million, it's still a small part of the big picture. Let me just say this, since I've been a commissioner, we've already remodeled the Community Crisis Center at least once. I don't know how many millions of dollars that was, but it was a lot of money.
I don't remember the cost.
It was a fairly significant amount. We're very proud of that facility. We touted that as, you know, the one-stop shop. We solved some of these problems, and it was just a few years ago. But we didn't have a comprehensive plan then, because here we are again today. Let's not do that again. Let's not do that again. So if this is a, if this is just expanding comcare and Community Crisis Center, but we still have a plan for something much larger, like a campus or something, this is almost, this is almost, I guess it's just, to me, it doesn't provide the comfort to know that we actually have a long-term plan. I don't know that we're, I'm not there yet, so.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I completely understand that, and Tom can attest to this, that because of timing, I believe that next week, we have on our staff calendar to have Brenda Dietzmann and some other folks with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition to come and talk to this commission about exactly the work that has been done over months and months and months with multiple stakeholders. Over 100 stakeholders have been attending multiple meetings where this conversation has been happening. And there's been opportunities, endless opportunities for folks to attend. And I'm excited that they're going to come and really present the overarching plan. So there is one. It just hasn't been presented to this commission yet because of timing. And so sadly, we're here now talking about it before you've seen something. And so it, you know, it just kind of how the cookie crumbled. But I will remind everyone again that the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition has a website, and I'd be happy to send it to you all again. There is multiple informations. There is the high-utilizer study. There, Tim, I don't know if you want to chat about all of that, but all of the information is there. And it is pretty telling that even though we have had a remodel of the Crisis Center, we've seen an exponential growth in substance abuse. We've seen suicides increase. We've seen, the numbers are there, and they don't lie. And, you know, while we have a staffing issue, I do believe that when you co-locate services, you not only provide better care to the community, but you provide a better environment for our staff to care for folks, because they can work together more cohesively. So, you know, unfortunately, it just kind of happened that the CIP discussion happened before next week's conversation with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. But there, there is a plan, and I'm excited for you guys to see it.
Okay. Thanks for that information.
And Commissioners, I can also provide this. This was a presentation that was prepared by comcare to the CIP committee. It's the comcare Community Crisis Expansion, and it talks about some of the supporting information in a floor plan. And so I can send this to you, and I'm sure it won't, it will probably just be a drop in the bucket compared to what you'll hear next Tuesday, but at least it can start to give you some more information.
Yeah, that's good. I think we all would like to have a copy of that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I don't see any other comments.
Okay, so the next item on the list then is comcare peer housing. This is another item that was discussed last year. This is something that would be a new service that would be offered by comcare. It basically would add two homes, like residential homes, that would accommodate four clients and at least one staff member 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that would be for short-term stays to provide behavioral health support and guidance to self-submitted clients. So this is part of the package. It would provide some immediate service. Again, this is something that we talked about last year, was put on the watch list, but now has been brought back for funding this year. And the cost has gone up just a bit, just because obviously, the residential market is booming, as we've heard from our appraiser. So then, moving down to the next few items, the bulk of these next few will not be new either. So the first one is the HHW Building Expansion, as you heard from Susan Erlinwine. When she was here, the household hazardous waste and environmental resources folks have had steep increases in services provided over the years, especially in the last year, I think, as everybody's been home and cleaning out their stuff. So there is definite need for this. It just so happens that the work, the debt service on the facility that's there today is about to be paid off. We do use the solid waste fee fund to pay that debt service each year. It goes into the bond and interest fund. If you remember, I talked about those other funds. This is one of those. And so that debt service would fall off, this debt service would pick up. So it wouldn't be an increase to the solid waste fee. It would allow things to remain static, and also would take care of some of those necessary adjustments there at that facility. And so this had been slotted in next year's CIP and remains there. Then, emergency communications remodel has two lines. One, because the 911 tax fund will pay the debt service on the bond for the work to be done at that facility. It already is paying a portion of the public safety building debt service. If you remember our slide the other day that talked about that service that's falling off, that is going to fall off in the not-too-far-off future. And so this, again, would not be an imposition on that fund. That fund would be able to sustain this. And that would remodel their current space, replace workstations, and make it a lot easier for them to move around. 26 existing stations will have power relocated, and 18 new stations will be added altogether. So then, going to health department flooring, this is one that was partially funded over two years. So partially this year and partially next year, again, in response to COVID. And so the carpet and some of the freight carpet was done this year. Another section, about 19,000 total square feet were identified replacement based on age and condition. Also, areas of potential asbestos were identified and are included as potential abatement once that work is complete. And Commissioner Dennis, I see your light.
We can do away with the chairman.
Right, I know. He told me I could run the meeting today.
Very good. We're going to spend $4 million on a building that we rent?
Oh, so the Health Department West Central Clinic is a space that is leased. That lease is probably going to run out. So this actually would foresee us buying that space, purchasing the property. Because it is leased right now, we can't do really the work that's necessary to make that as user-friendly as it really needs to be. And so this would include the acquisition of that property plus the remodel.
Okay. I just couldn't believe we'd spend $4 million on something and then give it back to them. All right, thank you.
No, agreed. Okay, other questions, since I'm taking the chairman's place right now?
Okay.
It's good fun.
Yeah.
Okay. So just a couple little visual aids. If, I would point, that top-left picture is actually related to the flood control project. And I don't know if you can see that shadow of the person in the very far bottom-right corner, but that just tells you how big, like, these drains are and things that are being worked on through this project. being worked on through this project. Then you can see the Adult Attention Facility, our current Crisis Center, and our favorite sirens. I always throw that in for our members of the committee who enjoy those the most. So now we're going to move to Category 2, and if I can remind you what Category 2 means, they are important projects, but they are not urgent, and they're not a part of a preventive maintenance schedule. And so these, this first slide that you'll see are projects slotted for 2023, and then the next slide that you'll see will be Category 2 projects that are slotted for 2024. So, the very first one, of course, is a hot-button issue that we've talked about. I know it's something that's been proposed to be on next year's legislative platform, but that is the Regional Forensic Science Center DNA Lab Edition. This is another project that has been on and off of the CIP over the years, sometimes in the watch list, sometimes in the active CIP. But basically, it would expand the current RFSC to house the new DNA lab for evidence screening and forensic analysis. It incorporates specialized engineering to maintain compliance with accreditation and quality control requirements. An expansion is on a neighboring lot that's already owned by the county. And so then what that would allow is the current space that's used for the DNA lab to be repurposed for the necessary growth for toxicology and firearms. So, yes, sir?
Thank you. How mu- it goes back to my basic question that I asked when Dr. Stedman was here. How much of this expansion is things that are required by state statute, and how much of it is required because we want to do a good job for our local folks? Because I still believe that KBI has ultimate responsibility on this, and we're, we're doing this to get things done because they're not very timely on getting the, the investigations done for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. It's my understanding, as far as the DNA lab is concerned, is that we have no statutory requirement to provide that service. That's a service that, when the Science Center was established a number of years ago, that's a service that ultimately came into play there. It is a vital service for both law enforcement, the sheriff, and particularly Wichita Police Department, the big jurisdiction, and then for the, the district attorney, and on occasion, the US Attorney.
But Rusty, I don't deny that it's a vital service we provide. It's critical.
Yes, sir.
We have to have it for the sheriff, the police department, the DA, the courts. But how much of it is really required by Sedgwick County to do it? If we lived in Butler County, would they be doing all this, or would they be sending it to KBI?
We're not statutorily required to provide that service. KBI has a DNA lab. There are some procedures that Dr. Stedman and her lab provide that the state does not, but otherwise, those services could be outsourced. She's the expert. I would leave that explanation to her, but we're not statutorily required, and if we did not provide the service, then our law enforcement would be working with KBI more than likely for most of those services.
I agree, and that would handicap all of those. So I'm, I'm not arguing that we're not doing a good job.
I, I understand, sir.
I'm arguing that we've got to go to the state and say they've got to help us. And so this just reiterates, we're going to spend another $6 million of Sedgwick County taxpayers' money to do something that the state of Kansas should be doing for us. So I just, I will keep reiterating that until we get it across to the state of Kansas, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
I might mention, it is the 2023 CIP, so we can put it on a platform next year, have this discussion at a greater level, so.
Okay, so the next project on your list is something that should not surprise you based on what Julie Simpson talked with you about during her emergency management presentation, and that is, and actually, I think, was referenced yesterday. And that is the need for emergency preparedness, basically warehousing and storage, and potentially even then using that space for drive-through. This is something that is very high on the radar, I would say, related to ARPA funding, because it seems exactly like what that money is intended to do is help us to be set up to weather whatever comes next. I know that we have had a lot of help and support from the community, sometimes though at great cost, to make all of this stuff happen, but if we can have our own facilities, it would just make us much more efficient. And so the estimated cost for the project is about 1.5 million, but again, we will be delving into the ARPA rules to see if this is something that would qualify. The next item is a construction of an EMS garage facility. So this is something, again, that has bounced in and out of the CIP over the years, but related to the EMS garage, there, there is a regulation that basically says that we maintain ambulances at a certain temperature when, especially when drugs are involved. They need to be in climate-controlled areas. And so as, this has been a request for years and years, but I think it finally got brought up this last year, and so the CIP Committee now feels like it is time to fund this. We have, this has been a lower priority relative to other projects, but now that we've actually seen that there is something behind that regulation, we think this is something we need to respond to. So this would be about $734,000, and again, this would be bond-funded, it would be packaged as a part of a variety of other projects that we're doing. If you all remember, you passed a charter last year, a charter resolution that talked, Charter 69, that changed the way we do facility bonding. It used to be that we could only do general obligation, the cheaper debt, for facilities that were within a three-block radius. This is going to be the first opportunity to really take advantage of that new charter, and because it is still a county facility, we're going to be able to get a lower interest rate. So kind of a win-win to solve a problem that we've got and hopefully not spend so much money. So then the next one are-
Commissioner Dennis.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, she didn't-
I missed your light. Oh, my gosh, I'm failing. I'll turn it back to him.
You're looking down, something, okay, I'll do my job.
Oh, thank you.
So these are ambulances that are not in service right now, or what, what are these ambulances that are going into this garage?
Do you want to speak to the specifics? Thank you.
Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager, again. On the, on the garage, this was a project that has been in the CIP for probably five or six years at the very minimum. Down on Stillwell, in that, in the building that houses a lot of the EMS logistics and billing and, and administration, they have a five-bay garage, and that garage is utilized to store ambulances that are, the spare ambulances, the, the reserve ambulances. So if an ambulance needs to go down for regular maintenance, or if it has a mechanical issue that has to go into the shop, they have reserve ambulances available for paramedics to come down, drop their ambulance off for service, and take a different ambulance. Those ambulances are required by regulation to be stored in a, in a environment that does not drop below 50, mid-50s degrees. There's not a high-end temperature, but it's, it's a low temperature. So EMS identified several years ago the need for more space than the five bays. One of those five bays is utilized by a, it's utilized as a post, so an ambulance is stationed down there that responds to calls, so that takes up one bay. So they have four bays for their spare, spare ambulances. I think at this point, they have eight reserve ambulances. And those have to be maintained in a temperature-controlled environment in order to be compliant with the regulation. So what they've done is played magical, or musical ambulances. They shuffle them around the county and put them in spare bays, which is not real efficient and inconvenient whenever they're trying to switch one out for one, and they're having to drive several different locations to get it done. So as a matter, matter of being in compliance with the regulation and being a little more efficient about the housing of those ambulances, what they had hoped to do was expand their garage space down on Stillwell on a piece of property across the street from the main building, so that they could meet the standards of the regulation, have a little more space to work on, do some minor work on the ambulances and the equipment that goes in them. And so that's what this project is about.
Okay, but convenience comes at a cost of 3/4 of a million dollars. We're just building a brand-new fire station out in Andale, it's got four bays in it, it's got some empty space. I mean, 3/4 of a million dollars for convenience, I'd have a hard time going and convincing my taxpayers that that's a good way of spending money.
I think that's why it's been on and off the, the watch list and, in the CIP for several years, is that we've allowed them to continue to-
We may need to take that off again.
We've allowed them to shuffle ambulances in and out of different facilities as, as opposed to building a garage, but they asked again, they, they brought it up again this year as a CIP, as a CIP project, and the committee evaluated it and, at least put it in, in '23, and if the commission, obviously, it's a will of the commission.
We've got that station up off of 135 that, that the sheriff keeps his tank and so forth in. I mean, we've got facilities around that can put ambulances in.
So EMS does have surge equipment stored in those bays up on, up at Post 8, as well as the sheriff. So all of those bays are pretty much full of reserve EMS and reserve sheriff equipment. Like I say, they're utilizing most of the space that they have to store, reserve ambulances and reserve surge equipment for EMS. They're just, they have it in different places, and they go get it as they need it. So that's, that's the strategy they're using now.
I'm just not willing to spend 3/4 of a million dollars for convenience. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Al.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, just curiously, how do we handle this issue today without adequate space to store that many extra vehicles?
Like I say, right now, if they don't have spare bays to put them in, then they remove all of the fluids and medications, store them indoors, leave the ambulance outside. If the ambulance is equipped, then they have to find a place to put it, and that's what they do, is they take it to, take it to an available facility and park it, and then if they need it, they have to go drive and get it, bring it back down to Stillwell and switch it out.
I, I assume that's what we probably did, and I, and I don't know how much difficulty that is, but it seems like i- if you're going to leave an ambulance, you know, sitting for a couple of days or whatever, then I think that would be a reasonable way to, to do that. I don't know how, how much, how much effort that is to do that, but it seems like, it seems like it's a reasonable thing.
Yes.
In terms of our fleet, I don't, don't we have, I think, 31 or 32 vehicles in our EMS fleet? I'm talking about ambulances, not talking-
That sounds, that sounds pretty close, but I'd, I'd want to double-check that before I speak specifically.
So we have five, we have five bays now, and, and in terms of our, I think, 16 or 17 posts now, some of them actually have enough space for two ambulances currently. Some of them.
Correct. Then they post up on Web Road as a, as a two-bay, and it runs one ambulance, so there are some other posts that have extra space.
So again, I think another, another solution might be to look out there and see how many spaces we have that would be able to handle a second vehicle potentially as a place to store, and if not, then, let me just also say, I know we're running usually around four trucks down normally, we used to be 21 in the daytime, and I think our current plan right now is 19, but we're not, but usually four trucks down from that, so I think a typical day right now, we're running 15 ambulances, which is really less than 50% of our fleet. So we, means we have, you know, 16 or 17 ambulances, we have to find a place to store, because they're not being utilized actively in any particular day. So, you know, this is a much bigger problem than going from five to eight, or whatever the number would be.
Well, those, those ambulances that are not operational, if they're assigned to a post, they're going to be housed in that post, so it's not finding a place to put them, they're, they're in the post that they belong to until staff shows up.
And I think a lot of our ambulances right now are going from call to call to call, so they're not really being, they're not really sitting waiting for the next call most of the time anyway.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, so we will move next then to Health Department Facility Upgrades. So this is a project that had been in an outer years of the CIP in the past. This is something that has been bumped up. This would take that building that is now ours, that we got from the City of Wichita on West 9th, and it would, I'm sorry, East 9th, good lord, and it would basically go through and update their LED lighting, it would replace ceilings, do paint, coordinate HVAC updates, update electrical service and panels, and update fire alarms. So it would do a lot just to make it more aesthetically pleasing, which I think we've seen, just based on sheer volume of patients this year, that's something that I think is something the CIP Committee could get behind, particularly with the increased volume for these folks at the Health Department. So that would be about $1.2 million, and that is something also that would be part of a packaged bonding project. So then the next item, oh, sorry, Commissioner.
Tim, can you help me, can you remind us, now that the city has vacated, that, have they vacated?
They're in the vac, yes, they have vacated.
Okay, so the space that they occupied, what will the Health Department now occupy in that space? What will they, what will, what will it be used for?
The immediate needs are tied to the COVID response, and once we, we get past the COVID response and we free up some of those, that, that space, we will be able to more adequately house existing staff that had been in inadequate space in that setting and other settings.
Okay. Yeah, that, that building is in rough shape.
And not to denigrate the city and their maintenance and the way they maintained it, but, you know, they knew for a number of years that they weren't going to own that building after this year, and so I think that may have contributed to, you know, there's a lot of just infrastructure work that needs to be upgraded and replaced and that sort of thing. That's the bulk of the cost.
So is there a way you can get us a list of all of the services that are in there? What's the square footage of that building?
I, I would be delighted to get that to you. Yeah, we'll send you information about square footage, the current usage, and then how we plan to use it going forward.
Okay, thank you.
So the next item then is the Courthouse Police Access Control Replacement, which we're all used to getting in and out of things with this now, as opposed to our old-fashioned keys, which I still carry with me just in case. And so what this would do is basically replace and get us all on the same system. So this system right now is used at the main courthouse, the historic courthouse, the parking garages, the Public Safety Building, Munger, and the Reagan Building, just downtown. Then it's used widely throughout the rest of the county at correctional facilities and juvenile court and all of those places. And so basically, what this would do is transition us all to the same system, and that card system is compatible with that used by the City of Wichita. And so basically, we'd be able to integrate our data with their data, and hopefully maybe have ease of access to, for, for certain staff between both units of government. So that is something, I know they are anxious to get that done sooner, just because of, like with everything, anytime there's an access control system, there's cybersecurity threats as you have aged infrastructure. And so this may be something that we look to fund sooner if we have savings in a project or something, just because we know that there are some risks, but of course, don't want to go into those too publicly and expose our weaknesses. So, but something we definitely want to look into. So then the next three projects are funded in 2023, still Category 2. These are park projects that have been on the radar for some time. So the first is the Lake Afton Pavilion, Pavilion, sorry, it helped my top. So the building's location makes it a great venue for citizens to use, but the interior has decades of wear and tear, as well as piecemeal repair and updates, and so this has left it unattractive for users. And so we would want to also update the electrical to the wellhouses while we're at it, so this would be funded at about $250,000. Next would be the Sedgwick County Park Cottonwood Shelter. This would convert the old bait shop into a usable and rentable shelter with restrooms, a kitchen, and a meeting room. So get an opportunity to improve and also potentially create some revenue. And then finally, the Boundless Playscape. Hopefully, you're all familiar with that, but that is the accessible playscape that is out at the Sedgwick County Park. And basically, this would replace the worn rubber base that's under the play equipment. It was installed in 2008, and of course, it's highly used and especially has been used lately. And so the Rotary Club is going to remove all the sanded play areas that actually contribute to the wear and tear of this rubber base, but this would allow those folks to have, and those kids, to have a more aesthetically pleasing and also just safer foundation to play on. So that's at a cost of about $280,000. So then we move into the final slide for Category 2 projects. So this next one would, in 2024, replace the playground structure itself at Lake Afton Park. It is missing a component, and the manufacturer is no longer in business, so there's no replacement parts. So the structure is still usable, but at a reduced rate, and the new project would also be ADA compliant. And so that's at a cost of about $125,000. Next is a new project to the CIP, it is the DA Juvenile Building.
No, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So going back to this playground.
The Boundless Playscape or the Lake Afton Park?
So they replace the playground structure. They're going to, please elaborate on that. They're going to replace the whole structure?
Basically, the, it is not fully, folks aren't able to fully use it right now because there's this, this component that's missing, and they cannot get a replacement part, and so basically, they need to reinstall a brand-new play structure at Lake Afton Park. Park. And that version will be ADA compliant, which is also, um, something we obviously wanna see.
Oh, Lake Afton, I'm, I'm thinking Sedgwick County Park.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm saying a lot of words. I can see how that happens.
Yeah, lots of words.
Yeah. Okay. So we will.
Thanks for getting it in. Some of the acronyms, we have to refresh the first time you talk about them. So LAP is.
Sorry. I will, I will do a better job of.
That's right.
Of hitting those, cause we're gonna talk about more parks, projects. So I will, I will emphasize that a little more.
Like the next one, the sync, what is that?
Yes. Child in Need of Care.
Okay.
And so I did abbreviate on that just because it's a really long phrase.
Okay.
So right now, uh, the DA Juvenile Division is trying to get additional storage space on the second floor because they basically figured out that what's there now doesn't have the support, um, or doesn't have the, uh, structure to support the weight of what's going in there just because of the number of files. So additional floor beams need to be added. It also would include the removal and relocation of existing workstations, workstations. There would be the purchase and installation then of those new workstations, new shelving units and new light fixtures. And so that project would cost roughly, roughly three hundred thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lopez?
Is there any way to digitize that so we don't have to physically have those files?
That is an excellent question. I don't know the answer, but I can ask.
Three hundred thousand dollars, it seems like it would help save money and make it a lot easier to store.
We can certainly ask. I know, I know the courts are trying to go electronic. I don't know that they have fully gotten there, but certainly we can ask that question and follow up.
Thank you.
Okay. So then our next two, um, are projects that were on the watch list last year, but now have come, uh, onto the program to be funded in the third year. And this is for the exterior, the lovely blue exterior brick here at this facility. It is spalling, which I learned means that it is peeling, popping out or flaking off. So S.P.A.L.L.I.N.G. I learned something new last night. So the intent would be to repair the brick and seal all openings around the marble and stone installed at the top of the courthouse. So, uh, that project would be roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. And then finally, uh, for category two is the historic courthouse, exterior stone repair. And so this would replace or repair deteriorated limestone, foundation blocks and stone, window sills, decorative limestone elements. It would also secure loose stone elements and remove all biological matter. And so, um, just a few pictures here of, uh, parks, uh, down in that bottom left, you can see some of that deterioration that, uh, is necessary to be fixed. And then of course you can see the historic and main courthouses and then, uh, spot, uh, looking at the Regional Forensic Science Center. So category three then, um, still two slides on this. So we're gonna focus on 2025 projects first. So category three again are projects that are on the horizon, but a lower sense of urgency. Many of these are repeat projects. It's just other things keep coming up that kinda beat them out and continue to keep them in that, uh, lower category. So the first two items relate to EMS facilities. The first is EMS access control. And so that would give them card activated locks and access systems for walk indoors on all EMS facilities. And it would provide connectivity to control access credentials individually or globally. And then, uh, so that would be about a hundred and eighty thousand. And they're also requesting video surveillance cameras and a monitoring system for all EMS facilities. And that would be roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the next item that's included, uh, I do wanna highlight for you, it is the Fire District Storage Facility. And you'll see that it is in as cash funded. That is not county general fund cash funded. That is Fire District cash funded. Now, in the last couple of years, the commission has taken action to authorize us to move some of their excess cash that they don't spend if they have enough fund, uh, or enough budget authority within the year. So we think we likely would have enough cash, um, that has already been transferred out to fund this. But of course they would need the budget authority to support this, but it wouldn't have an impact on your general fund. And so this storage facility would be for two reserve engines, one reserve tender, two reserve squads and associated equipment. So like you heard about EMS, the stuff right now is kind of scattered throughout, um, and it is not stored in a climate controlled location. So this would allow all of those things to, uh, be moved into one place and, um, be much more efficient. So, and I see a question.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, just cause we have money is not a good reason to spend it.
You are very right.
And it's six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. I've got a great big building sitting out there. We're gonna have a building sitting over at, uh, uh, the yard in Andale, uh, that we're moving an engine out of. I, I don't understand paying six hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for a storage facility right now. And, and again, I, I, we can cut the mill levy and, and solve the problem on, on, uh, having excess money in the fire budget. So that, that's not a good reason to spend it. Thank you.
Okay. I guess you don't have a question. Uh, this was, I'll, I'll just explain that, um, down at the regional training center, Wichita Fire's Regional Training Center. Wichita is working on a CIP to build a storage facility for their reserve engines and their reserve apparatus and equipment.
So you wanting to put this at the regional training facility?
So this, this would be.
We can't get consolidation moving. And you wanna build something over there? You wanna put a person over there full-time, uh, that, uh, only trains three times a year? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Um, for the EMS access control, is that a completely different system than what we're trying to use with our badges for the rest of, or?
It would be the same system, but it would just be adding it. They don't have that right now at all.
So that wouldn't be included in the other project to do everything else?
It wouldn't necessarily. That, that's a little more urgent than this one is. Plus just because of the way we fund things, this would come out of EMS cash. The rest of that would come out of general fund cash because it's a downtown facility that our facilities department has can, uh, control and, and responsibility for. Whereas right now, like if you look at, I know this came up in the, the budget reviews with them the other day with their posts, but like if you look at their contractuals for each of those posts, that's what it costs to actually operate that facility. And so that would be where we would wanna pay for this out of. So it's really more of a technical issue and a timing issue as opposed to, um, I mean, you, you make a good point. If it's more efficient to do it, we could certainly do it, but I think they're two, two different projects.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the next item in category three then are JDF cameras. And so this isn't an upgrade, it is not a replacement. But basically it would update that security system to record audio in areas of the facility where residents may be present. So it would be an enhancement instead of just having the video ability, it would also have the audio capability. So, um, that is in for about two hundred thousand dollars. Then another project that we talked about last year, um, that I think actually probably has a higher priority than where it's funded, but there are just some technical challenges, is the public safety building parking lot. Um, you'll see a picture of this here in a couple of slides. But basically, um, those public safety employees, the nine-one-one staff and those folks park immediately behind their building. And as we all know, there's kind of a, a pathway there, um, for, uh, either folks who may be getting out of jail or, um, as, as folks transition between services. And so that can be somewhat scary, especially at night. And of course, these are twenty-four, seven operations. And so there have been instances where our staff have been, um, you know, approached in, in some alarming ways. And so we wanna try and put up a fence. The problem is we don't necessarily own all of that space. And so we need to figure out a way to do this in a way that makes good sense, um, and in a way that protects our staff. And so that would be, uh, it's not a lot of money. It's only fifty-one thousand dollars. Certainly something we wanna try and do, but we need to work through those logistical issues. And if we can do that, you'll probably see this get escalated. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I feel like for fifty thousand dollars, the safety of our staff is worth every penny of that. I don't believe we can wait till 2025 for that. How?
I think the issue is that, and Rusty can speak to this, if we need to get into the details, but not all of that property where they park is ours. And so we can't necessarily fence off property that's not ours.
But we're using the property as parking.
We are. But I think there's still some coordination and things that need to occur. And so this is why we feel like it's important enough to still be funded. It shouldn't be watch list. But it's a matter of, we need to, we need to figure out how that's gonna happen. And so far we haven't been able to get there. And, and this has been on the radar for years now.
You think it'll take us three years to figure that out?
It has been on the radar for at least three years. So, um, potentially, I, I hope not, but it's just a matter of.
So who owns the property?
Rusty, I'm gonna let you speak to the details on this, cause I'm starting to get out of my comfort zone.
Our neighbors to the south, um, the facility to the south of us owns the, the portion of those parking spaces that we utilize. And currently they don't charge anything for us to use as parking spaces. They would allow us to fence it, but then they would want to charge a pretty significant fee, uh, annually for the use of those parking spaces if we fenced it. Right now they don't wanna sell the property and they don't wanna let us fence it and utilize it at no cost. They just wanna, we can use it at no cost as long as it's not fenced. If we fence it, then we need to start paying them rent on that space annually. And so we're just trying to work out the logistics of.
So Rusty, who is our neighbor?
I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of our.
Envision?
I'm sorry.
Envision.
Envision, yes, thank you. Envision owns the property. Their utilization is, at least through the pandemic, has been pretty much non-existent. Outside the pandemic, they do use some of those spaces, but, uh, a lot of them are used by emergency communications or whenever there are, uh, events at the public safety building and they're utilized by.
So would, so if the fence went up, would they still be able to access their building?
This, yeah, this doesn't impact their building. These are spare spaces that they have on our side of the street, but they own a portion of that paved area that the county does not own. So it's, it's a mixing of their property and our property and the amount that they wanna charge should we fence it and not wanting to sell the property. So we've kind of been.
So if we did fence the property and their employees wanted to park in there, cause you said that they do park in some of those spaces.
It's generally visitors to the building. So we would have to work out the logistics of whether we give them key card access to the property or not. And I think that's why they wanna charge fees for us because.
What would be the?
Mixing, the mixed juice would be possible, but they, they wouldn't be able to use it for guests. They would have to push their employees over to that side of the street. So there's some logistics issues that we just haven't worked out.
We have, so it's Envision on the south and WABA on the north is, is our neighbors on either side. And when they built the structure, um, ten, fifteen years ago now, they did just not acquire enough parking for the space. So we're looking for a remedy to this. As I recall, the, um, the south portion of our parking lot where our nine-one-one, uh, folks mostly park is owned by Envision. So we've had this relationship for the last several years where we're kind of bleeding over into their parking. And I think there's, uh, um, some desire by them to reconcile this. I think that's what we're gonna go forward with here. It's out a few years. We get a chance to talk about this and negotiate what is best, but we're, we're hammed in there, um, from a property perspective. There's just no available property unless Envision wants to sell us that. Uh, and I'm trying to think of what to do east of that. I think that runs right into Market going north and what's east of Market? I can't recall, but.
There's apartment, an apartment complex and an office building over there. That's all private parking.
Right there, right. So we're really, we're landlocked in here and just don't have enough parking. That's the problem.
Okay. Well, I think that both of those entities are reasonable folks. I wonder how we can work this out as a compromise, um, you know, and if we have, if at night is when the majority of the security issues happen, I mean, is there a way to maybe not fence off the whole thing? I mean, I'm sure you guys have thought about this. I just can't believe that for fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna risk our staff for the next five years, four years.
It's, it's, it's never been fenced. The, uh, occasionally somebody comes through the parking lot and shakes doorknobs on the cars or, uh, once in a great while, there's a confrontation in the parking lot, somebody asking for money or something like that. There's homeless and, uh, there's folks coming from the, uh, comp care facility across the street that pass across the property. So there's an occasional confrontation or somebody shaking doors.
Yeah, it takes a second for someone, just like we saw at QT the other day, a thirty-nine year old guy was shot and dead. So I mean, it takes a second for something to happen. And I just wonder how we can, if security is the issue and public safety is one of three of our top priorities, I guess I would like to see this worked a little harder.
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, folks in nine-one-one in that building, they work twenty-four hours a day. They're gonna be going in and out of there in the evenings. I have no problem whatsoever with, uh, making sure that they have someplace secure. So I hope we can work with WABA or Envision or someone like that. I know I've talked to WABA several times. If you look out back of their building, like they had some big trees, people were living under them, uh, so they had to take the trees out. So there, there's a concern over in that area. And we make, we need to address it for our employees to make sure they feel safe when they go out in the middle of the night. So I, I'm sure, and I would think Envision would work with us and, and WABA would work with us. Those are our neighbors. Thank you.
Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, um, is one of the, one of the aspects of, of having a downtown footprint, I think this is a challenge not just for these folks, but for many others that work even in this building. The election office staff, there's lots of folks that come and go to the election office and there's same problem all around that building potentially. So, um, this is not something that's easily solved. And in fact, I would just point out in guess comp care right across the street, we, we just talked a few minutes ago about potentially relocating that entire activity someplace else. And so we've got a building right across the street that potentially, I have no idea what we're gonna do with, what we're gonna do with that. We own that building, correct?
Correct.
So, so that's right across the street. Those, again, those, those employees currently have the same, same challenge, but, uh, if, if and when we move that activity someplace else, that creates a, uh, a lot right across the street doesn't necessarily solve the problem. Again, you just talked about something to the east of Market, but you, that, that doesn't solve the problem. If someone has to park there and then walk to the public safety building, that doesn't solve that problem. I, I assume most of the staff primarily has a, a shift change hour, let's say that there's a lot of people coming and going over, say over an hour. That happens two, three times a day? Can we not provide some security to those folks as they're coming and going? You know, bring someone in and.
Courthouse, courthouse police patrol that area, um, fairly routinely. They're not there all the time. And as Commissioner said, things happen in a split second and courthouse police are not there all the time. Of course, we have the same problem with the Reagan building. There's no security at the Reagan building. If something happens down there, they're dependent upon WPD making a response and/or courthouse police getting from this facility across to their facility. You know, so they aren't a twenty-four hour facility over there, but we have security in a number of places in our facilities. This one is a twenty-four hour facility. The parking lot's lighted, uh, fencing with, uh, key card, secured in, entrance and exit would make it a little more secure for those employees working night shift specifically, but it would be secure for the day shift too. So.
I guess I'm saying have a, have a physical presence there when the shift change is happening. Let's say half an hour before and after those moments where people are coming and going into the building, quite a lot of people coming and going, you have a physical presence and, and it, there's, people can see there's a security officer nearby. To me, that would be a reasonable thing to do and I don't want anybody to feel.
Shift change isn't necessarily the, the issue. It's those who are coming and going, uh, for their break, maybe one person or two people Maybe one person or two people going out for a break by themselves into the back parking lot to either go to QuickTrip or just to eat outside or, you know. So it's, it's those times that there's just one or two people coming and going as opposed to a time when several people are coming and going. There's some security in numbers. It's, it's those individuals moving in and out by themselves that are the more, you know, the concern, so.
I think, so I think the problem is a little bit different than just say that the entire parking lot needs to be secure. I don't know that would, I don't know that solves the problem. But if people are making a choice to leave, you know, on a break and go someplace else, I don't know that we can- I mean, if they're gonna, just say they go down to the QuickTrip, for example, that's exactly where this crime just happened the other day. So, you know, we, we can't protect them there, obviously, so. And I would just be, I would guess I'd be curious to know if we've had any incidents with our staff that have been assaulted in any way, coming and going to that building. Do we, do we have any history of?
We have, we have some history of, I've got a few of them saved and I know Laura can provide some. Over the past couple of three years, there was instances where, again, either somebody's out in the parking lot shaking door handles, trying to get into cars or there's been a time or two that employees have gone out and had somebody approach them asking for money or in one instance, a guy, an employee opened the back door to go out and there was a guy standing there and he immediately went into the building. The basement and the upper floors are both secured doors, so he couldn't get into the dispatch center or into emergency management. But he was loose in the stairwell by himself because that employee didn't see him as, as it, as that person was going out. And he just infiltrated the building, at least into that secure stairwell area. So we've had some things like that happen. They're not every day by any means, but they occur and when they happen, they're scary for the employees.
I'll continue thinking, again, this is a number of years out in the future, so I guess we have plenty of time to talk about it and think about it, but thank you.
We'll get back with Envision and we'll see what, uh, you know, if they don't wanna sell, then we'll look at the aspect of paying annual lease on those spaces and fence it in that way. I mean, that's the other option is that we, the other option would be that we fence it, but we pay them a lease. And I think it was somewhere in the range of sixty to seventy thousand dollars annually to lease those spaces while they're fenced in and, you know, so that's, that may be the other option that we pursue. But we'll get with them and find out.
Commissioner Lopez?
Well, I was gonna offer the idea of a security guard as well, so we were on the same page there. Then I was gonna ask how much the annual lease is, but you just answered that as well, so thank you.
Who are you talking to at Envision?
I have not spoken to him. We had Steve Martins, I believe, our real estate guy was talking to them about the sale and-
If you remind me, I'll, I'll just call Michael Monte Ferrante and ask him to bridge to whoever it is. He's, I think he might be reasonable.
We'll, we'll give our date and-
I'll call my, alright, I'll call Michael. Just remind me to, for my to-do list. Thank you. Next.
Thinking, I'm just gonna station Rusty right behind me here. So, uh, the next couple of items then are park-related. So in both, or I'm sorry, all three are recurring items that have been in the CIP before. So the first two are replacements of the red brick restrooms at the Lake Afton Park. And so each of those would be just a little bit more than two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars. But there is pretty significant wear and tear within those facilities, definitely some drainage issues. And so, and, and I mean, they're forty-plus years old, so it's just time for a refresh. And they are also not ADA compliant, so this would bring those into compliance. The final item on this list is about ninety-nine thousand dollars and that is the replacement of four gazebos at the Sedgwick County Park. Those are located in four different areas along the path. And basically, they are to the point now where they are just non-reparable anymore and need to be replaced. So this is the cost of replacement for all four of those. So then we move into the final year of the facility drainage CIP. And so, uh, item number one is the replacement of EMS post one. This is another item that has come in and gone out of the watch list over the years. So this is a facility that was provided originally by Riverside Hospital and currently is owned by Via Christi Health. And as we know, that facility there has recently sold. And so we're kind of dependent on, on what happens there. So this would contemplate the replacement of that post. The current post is serviceable and has had recent repairs, but we may need to find another location. And so that is what the cost is in here at one-point-five million would be the replacement of that post entirely. Uh, and you can see that that again would be funded with bonds. And this is again where we would be able to take advantage of that Charter sixty-nine provision that would allow us to just do kind of our, our less expensive bonding. So then the next item is also EMS and this is in their admin building on Stillwell. This would replace the carpet that has frayed. It's not really a public building and so that's why it's not a higher priority than what it is. It's about eighty thousand dollars. Next is adult field service facility upgrades. This is about three-hundred thousand dollars. This would remove and replace carpet in high, or I'm sorry, remove carpet in high-traffic areas and replace it with finished concrete. Would replace carpet squares and offices, would replace rubber tile on stairs. There would be new painting, there would be modification of a glass wall, remove blinds and add shades and replace, replace door signage. So really more aesthetic-type work, which again is why it's a lower priority overall in the capital improvement program.
And remind me, this is a facility that we own, correct?
Correct. So then, uh, the next several are properties or are projects related to parks. So the first one, SCP, Sedgwick County Park, would be a new dog park, fitness course and disc golf. This is something we talk about every year. It's always something that would be nice to have, but because it's a nice-to-have and not necessarily a high-priority need, it continues to, to live in kind of this final year of the CIP. My understanding is that by having it in the CIP, we do potentially have some opportunities to seek some grant funding. And so, um, we may have some opportunities to do it sooner, depending on how that all works out. So that would be roughly two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars. The next item is space that used to be where the Judge Riddell's Boys Branch is. We would want to look into developing that space into more usable park property. And so we would add a vault toilet, which is my favorite CIP project ever, cause it's just so darn funny. And then add a fitness trail and course and a disc golf course. So, um, that is in for about three-hundred thousand dollars. And then finally, I know this is one that will make Commissioner House sad, cause this is something we talk about every year. But this final project would be to add more campsite water hookups at the Lake Afton Park. So it would add potable water to forty-two sites. Right now, only sixteen of the two-hundred-twenty sites, uh, electoral campsites, excuse me, have water hookups. And this would increase that number to fifty-eight. And so that's at a cost of about a hundred-thirty-two thousand.
Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Chairman. On that last item, I'm just, I'm just curious if we, if we have people in the county that have the, the skill set to do some of this work within our own organization? For example, Mark Stroff who worked with Public Works, for example, if they have time, they're not- I'm thinking maybe when the, when the park's not that, not that busy, maybe in the, in the colder months, perhaps they could pull in. I think this is primarily vibra, vibra plowing a line in around the lake. And I don't know if that's something we could do on our own or we, it sounds like this is intended to be contracted out. But the actual cost would not be that much if we had people who could do this on our own.
Commissioner, that's correct. We have looked at the, the possibility of maybe trying to fit, fit it into Mark's maintenance and work plan to see if there's a way that he and his staff and potentially some contract plumbers would be able to do that. I'll try and get back to you on the cost associated with that and the length of time it would take for them to do that work.
It, it just seems to me that this is stated the, you know, the five-year horizon every year I've been here. And this is one of those things that I just think that it's quality of life. There's a lot of folks who would love to camp out there, but this is a, you know, this is, this becomes the issue. So, um, it's not a lot of money, but the reality is I think it could be a lot less than this if we simply engage our own staff that maybe have the skill set and time perhaps to do that, fit it into their schedule, maybe when they're as busy. I don't know if that's even possible, but that, I would like to explore that, so. Thank you for that answer. And then again, I wanna go back to EMS post one for just a minute. Our last post we constructed on Web Road, wasn't that post seventeen?
Rusty, is that the number seventeen? Yes.
What, what did we pay for that building?
Tanya, do you remember, or Valerie? The one on Web Road? How much we paid for it? One point three?
Thirty-fifth Street North and Web Road?
Yeah, I don't remember.
We'll, we'll get that answer for you.
Okay, and then post one. Post one, we're not even using it right now. It's, it's not, it's, it's shut down, isn't it?
Post one, I believe is still operational.
That one's operating, okay. I'm confusing post one with the one by St. Francis Hospital, okay. This is the one by Riverside.
Yes, it's the one on that, that West Central facility that we just looked at a few months ago.
And right now, it's not, we don't know the answer as to where this would be constructed, it could be somewhere, it could be there or someplace else?
Correct, this would include the purchase of land.
Okay. I, I would like to have a, a discussion by the commission at some point regarding the, the level of capital we would invest in a, in a fire post or a EMS post going forward. I know we've seen everything from the Four Bay Station in Andale, kind of maybe a high end, to the EMS post on Web Road and Thirty-Fifth Street North, maybe on a lower end. I still think it's a pretty nice building and if the commission hasn't seen that building, they'd have gone to look at it. But again, that building won't last a hundred years, I understand that. But we also, I mean, Century Two's only fifty years old, they won't tear that down now. So my point is, I don't know we wanna spend, you know, millions and millions of dollars on something we don't know necessarily fifty years in the future how much we'll use that building. I, I, I would like to be a little bit more thoughtful perhaps in, in trying to find ways to get these posts where they need to be, but not spend, you know, one, one, one and a half to three million dollars on each post, so go ahead.
I agree.
Anyway.
I think the, I'm seeing one-point-four-eight-eight. I'm trying to remember on the Web Road post. We went prefab on that to some degree, same with post eight. I know we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on the dirt up there, though the real estate was expensive for that. But I think the build of that was about one-point-two, one-point-three.
Not counting, not counting the land purchase, but I think the billion, I don't think the, I don't, I don't even think the billion was even that much. I think we saved quite a lot, but more than, one of the takeaways, one of the talking points when we did the ribbon cutting on that one, was we saved a huge amount of money. Yeah, go ahead.
EMS fifteen on Web Road was roughly one-point-one million in total.
And compare that with other buildings we've built in the past. I guess I'd like to see the comparison so we understand what one-point-one million dollar-
Other buildings, as in EMS posts? Excuse me, as in other EMS posts, is that what you're asking me to compare to? Okay, we, we can get you a breakdown of those.
Does that one-point-one include the land purchase?
It does, yes.
So I think the building was like eight-hundred thousand.
Correct, just under eight-hundred thousand for construction of that building.
And that's about half the cost, maybe even less than half the cost of the other construction for other posts, I believe.
Yeah, we, when we did the analysis back then, and I'm going off memory, it was considerably less than the South Rock Road, which was the post that we had done previous to Web Road. And it was considerably half a million or so less than, than that. So it was, I mean, your point is taken that we ought to have a discussion and the commission give us policy on types of buildings. And it goes past even EMS and fire, it's, it's any facility, we ought to look at and have that discussion about policy on how we're going to build it.
You know, in the last, in the last year or two, I've enjoyed, I drive through other communities. I look at their fire stations and their ambulance posts just to kinda see what they do. And we have beautiful facilities. And the, the facility we actually remodeled on Fifty-third Street, there was a, an effort to replace that building. We ended up repairing the building and I think it turned out to be fantastic, actually. So I, you know, I just think we have to, I think we need to have a discussion about how we wanna do this going forward. Obviously, we're gonna continue to build posts where they're, where they're needed. But I see in the, we haven't got to yet, we're gonna see a proposal for another fire station over, over three million dollars. It just, I cringe, I mean, I wanna have a fire station if we need a fire station, but that's a lot of money. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So if that's the case, what you have just seen through categories one through three are the funded projects that we are proposing to you. So, um, category three, then here are a few snapshots of the projects. My thanks to Tony for helping me fill in some gaps here. So you can see the red brick restroom. You can see the space that all the people where, where we're standing is the JRBR space that would be redeveloped. You can see EMS post one. And then, of course, you can see the parking lot and how that is configured next to the public safety building. So, uh, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this part because this is the watch list. So these are items where the CIP committee is not recommending funding. And I will tell you, of course, we will take your direction. And if there's something on this list that you would like to see moved off, we can have that discussion. Doesn't necessarily have to be today. I know everybody's getting a little worn out and we still have to talk about road and bridge and how we're gonna pay for all this. But certainly, we can come back to you in a workshop setting or a staff meeting setting. So the first one is Fire Station Thirty-seven relocation. This was a project that was requested, but right now, this is something where we feel like more information is needed to understand the true need. And so that is slotted on the watch list. This is the facility that's out near Bel Air. So then the next one is the TCAM fire alarm. So where that facility is housed right now is in that historical museum. We know that there is a need push for a capital campaign to maybe relocate that facility. And so I think the type of fire alarm or type of response system that goes in, that's maybe more sophisticated than, than the normal system, is something that we need to understand based on what's in that building before we invest a lot in something that's pretty sophisticated. If there's not going to be a tenant, then maybe we just stick with the, the more basic type of smoke sensors and detectors and that kind of thing. The next item on the watch list is construction of a new EMS west post at one-point-five million. We know that there, and this actually speaks, I think, to what Commissioner Hal was referencing earlier. We know that there's significant growth out west, but those growth patterns need to be studied. And, and then the next post needs to be identified through that process. EMS post four is kind of a similar situation with EMS post one, not quite the same. But this is a facility that's been provided by Via Christi, or essentially, I'm sorry, Via Christi, the St. Joe Campus. Serves South Central and East Wichita. The current facility is a one-bay garage with small crew quarters and office. So this request would be to acquire property and construct a new facility that would have two bays, adequate office space and crew quarters for two ambulances. But again, that's on hold for now because the current situation is working, though maybe not ideal. And then finally, the JRF remodel project. We did do some of the more urgent issues there like HVAC. The rest of this, the committee considered more of a nice-to-have, less of a need. And so it remains on the watch list until we have more information. So in total, the presentation that you've seen today across all three funded categories, including facility and drainage, is about fifty-one-point-eight million dollars. You can see the vast majority of that is on facilities, about forty-seven-point-three million, the rest for drainage. And we look at how we're gonna pay for that, you can see that the vast majority, again, is going to be bond-funded. Again, as we talked about during our bond and interest proposal, we know there's quite a bit of debt falling off in the next few years with removal of that admin building, that pretty expensive admin building. There's a lot more capacity on that bonding side. So we have about thirty-eight-point-nine million there, about twelve-point-three million in general fund or EMS cash, some type of cash source on the county side. And then the fire district, of course, separate legal entity, has cash of about six-hundred-twenty-four thousand, although I did hear you. And so we may still yet have some discussion on whether we proceed with that in the actual CIP plan. And so again, fifty-one-point-eight million and you can see how that spreads over the five years. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Lynn Packer, but you're not quite done with me. Once he's done, I'm gonna come back and show you the details on how all of the financials for all of these projects work together.
Hello, Lynn?
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynn Packer, Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm here to talk about the road and bridges and give Lynn's your break, so. Okay, so this portion I'm gonna cover here is the road and bridge portion of the CIP. I'm gonna do my best to kind of hurry through the fluff a little bit and get us maybe a little bit back, back on schedule. We have six-hundred miles of roads we maintain in Sedgwick County, six-hundred-and-three bridges that are maintained, eighteen miles of bike and pedestrian paths and about thirteen thousand traffic signs. Well, our projects can generally be categorized in, in four categories. Maintenance, enhancement, expansion and quality of place. Our maintenance projects, to maintain our roads, we have preventive maintenance projects that we designate R-175 in the CIP. We have those roads that are replacement with like infrastructure, roads and bridges that are replacement with like infrastructure, fall under maintenance. Replacements sometimes incur like a minor enhancement, like widening shoulders or ditches or something like that. That's still maintenance, not an enhancement. And most bridge projects that we do are considered like infrastructure and therefore fall under maintenance. Our projects that enhance roads basically are those that relieve bottlenecks, improve safety, add capacity. These are roads that, where we widen bridges, we add, add center and turn lanes and make roadside improvements. The expansion category is, includes, for example, reconstructing a two-lane road to a four or five-lane highway and constructing new roads or bridges where we currently don't have, uh, uh, infrastructure. Our quality of place projects are those that include hike and bike paths, sidewalks and area park improvements. The goals of our CIP are basically two main goals. First, and that is to perform preventive maintenance- First, and that is to perform preventive maintenance at least every six years on our roadways to maintain them, and then replace our bridges about every 50 years. I do want to note that we are currently evaluating our bridge goal. Right now, if we replace a $4 million bridge, we get credit for one bridge replacement. If we replace a very small $400,000 bridge, we get credit for one replacement. So obviously, that makes it very difficult to do our larger bridge structures because we're trying to maintain that, that goal of about 12 bridges every year, and when we're replacing the big structures, that takes a huge chunk of money, and our budget isn't varying according to the size of the projects we do. So we're looking at potentially moving the metric to something that takes a bridge size into consideration, such as the deck area of the bridge, so that we can get a, move on to a metric that's more maintainable without taking away from other infrastructure projects. We do have a couple of proposed changes in the 2022 portion of the CIP, and those are, we were awarded $800,000 from KDOT to replace a bridge on 21st Street near Cheney Reservoir, and those, that sales tax savings we're going to get there will go into other projects. We reduced funding in 2022 to our miscellaneous drainage CIP, to use the sales tax money and other projects. We're going to still do the R264 miscellaneous drainage projects, we're just going to cover, use savings in that CIP fund to cover as, as needed. We have added a bridge project on 79th South Hayesville that will work in concert with the Project D21 that Lindsey spoke about early in her presentation. The drain, the design portion of it occurs in 2022 and construct, construction in 2023. And then we combined the CIP maintenance project for pavement markings with our road preventive maintenance projects, our CIP projects, and took that, basically just lumped it into R175. So the projects that maintain our road system, this is something we have every year, we have R134, which is our right of way and utility relocations over the next five years, we have about a million dollars programmed into that. I mentioned our preventive maintenance designated R175 projects, we do that with about 48 million dollars over the next five years, and our miscellaneous drainage projects come in at 2.8 million dollars over the five year CIP. Our bridge maintenance projects that we have include four rehabilitation projects that would be constructed at a cost of 6.8 million dollars. 6.8 million dollars is a lot of money, but it pales in comparison to the actual cost of replacing all four of those bridges. So we are trying to get about 20 years of useful life, additional life out of each of those bridges with these rehab jobs. We've programmed 16 bridge replacements in the CIP at a cost of about 15.3 million dollars over the next five years, and we've also added a CIP project to, that basically is dedicated to bridge maintenance that's been introduced starting in 2025, and that project will repair multiple bridges every other year with a goal of delaying major rehabs and replacements. And there are a total of 21 bridges projects that are, have identified in the 2022 to Our, we have several projects that will actually serve to enhance our road and bridge system. As you're aware, the North Junction Gold Phase 2A has started construction. Gold Phase 2B will follow next year, late next year, and we have programmed $5 million in 2023 and for, $2.4 million in 2024 to cover that portion of, our portion of those construction costs. We're still evaluating the gravel and cold mix replacement program, but there is 5.5 million dollars that is budgeted over the next five years. We have allocated 1 million dollars from this program in both 2023 and 2024 to help offset the cost of the North Junction project. And we have two other projects here that serve to enhance, and that's our projects R5353 and R354, and those were previously delayed projects that are now scheduled for construction in 2024 and 2025. Those projects will make needed safety improvements along Ridge Road from 53rd all the way up to 85th Street North. Moving on to additional projects that'll enhance our system, we have Project R348, and that'll pave a half mile stretch of 135th Street North up there by Mays from 53rd up to railroad tracks, and that'll serve the anticipated road increase in truck traffic to the Mays Industrial Park. We have projects R356 and R357 that were introduced last year CIP, those projects will make significant enhancements to 61st Street North and 151st Street West so that this route can be used for the heavy truck traffic that we're getting to and from the Element Ethanol Plant. And then the last on our enhancement projects is Project R359 that's in design now, and that'll pave a half mile of gravel road to serve the new 470,000 square foot cotton distribution warehouse that's in the Clearwater Business Park. That project will be similar to what we did in the west half mile of 61st Street for ethanol down in Colwich. Our road expansion category in this CIP is covered with Project R328, which you may remember is our right of way, our Northwest Bypass Right-of-Way Preservation. We, you guys approved, and KDOT has agreed to a dollar-for-dollar investment in that program up to 1 million dollars. So over this five-year CIP, we'll achieve 10 million dollars in funds over the next five years if we were able to continually contribute 1 million dollars each year. The cities of Mays and Goddard have agreed to reimburse us 5,000 dollars each year from each of them between 2021 and 2025. You'll actually see those agreements come before you for approval in the next couple of weeks. For a quality of place project that we have in the CIP, we have Project R358, which was introduced, I think, last year or the year before, that will be in its design phase in 2022. That project will actually connect the Goddard, a portion of the Goddard's bike path system with Wichita's bike path system, cutting through the county, and it will actually complement two city Wichita projects to make improvements to Maple Street. And majority of those funds will actually come through WAMPO. So, again, I'm trying to get through this as quickly as possible to get us back on schedule. So, five-year summary, we have a total expenditure for our road and bridge projects of 109 million dollars. It's actually 109 million, 152,000 dollars to be exact. 68% of those funds support maintenance of our infrastructure, we have 21% that enhances the infrastructure, 9% supports expansion, and 2% for quality of place. So if you want to look at it differently from the dollar amount, we have 52 million dollars for road and 22 million dollars for bridge maintenance, we have 23 million dollars that supports enhancements to infrastructure, 10 million dollars that will be of expansion, that's via the Northwest Bypass Preservation, Right-of-Way Preservation, and 2 million dollars for quality of place. The funds that we receive or be using for these projects obviously vary from bonds to local sales tax to grants. The majority of our projects are funded through local sales tax dedicated to highways. The, we receive 12.2 million dollars from KDOT through the Federal Exchange Program every year, and in 2023 and in 2024, we're actually going to use that for the North Junction, and by using it for that project, they're not going to take their 10% exchange rate, so we're actually going to gain 10% of those funds to help us cover that bypass and be efficient with those funds we are getting from KDOT. The bonding for qualified projects continues with an average of 4 million dollars a year, and then you will notice in 2023 that we do have an other funding source that's in there, and when Jim was up here last week talking, he mentioned 2 million dollars in savings from 2020, that was a precautionary removal of our funding in the CIP because of COVID and not knowing how that was going to impact us. That's going to come back to us in 2023, along with 611,000 dollars and some change that will be from savings in the CIP program that will, both of those will be allocated toward North Junction. We do have some funding opportunities that have presented themselves that we are currently trying to get funds for, we have not, we don't expect to hear back for probably another few weeks to a month, but those projects include three projects that we have sent in for congressionally directed funding through the House Surface Transportation Authorization member designated projects. A big, long name for earmark funds from, from the federal government. We sent three projects to Representative Estes' office and he, their staff, and he went through those projects for consideration, and I'm very pleased to tell you that all three that we submitted were passed on by his office to the Committee for Transportation and Infrastructure. So those are all three being considered for funding. KDOT Spring Cost Share Program, they have a cost share program they do every year, it's spring and fall, and the spring this year is actually given special consideration to projects from communities hardest hit economically because of COVID-19. Sedgwick County is one of, 35 counties identified as, as being hardest hit. So with that, we have a very good opportunity potentially to get a project funded through that cost share program. We submitted the 95th Street project that will pave the half mile gravel road down by the Clearwater Business Park. Actually, and I'd like to thank the City of Clearwater, they co-sponsored that project with us, that submission for, for that application with us, and I think we have a very good shot of funds out of that one. We've had to delay some of our projects to make room for the North Junction, you know, over the years here, and an award for one or more of these projects would significantly help us as we get into the 23 and 24 CIPs, so to be able to bring those back in and re-prioritize some of our work. As you know, our CIP projects, our CIP in general, has to be reviewed by the NA PC for consistency with the city-county comprehensive plan. So in meeting that goal, we have scheduled presentations similar to this one with the Advanced Plans Committee, with the Planning Department on June 3rd, and we will be delivering the presentation to the full Metropolitan Area Planning Commission on June 17th. And with that, I stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you so much. My question really revolves around, you know, as a county, we have three main focus: public health, public safety, public works. So when public health, or when public safety and public works intersect as far as which of these projects are the most unsafe, how do we, how do we classify those? So if we have a road that's like really bad in comparison to other roads, how, how do we make that determination about who gets on what list where?
Staff makes those determinations on a case-by-case basis. The Ridge Road projects, for example, those shoulder enhancements, that's a safety enhancement there. There currently are no shoulders along Ridge Road, some people might say there's about a foot or less of shoulder, but there really is no shoulders. That has a lot of truck traffic heading up to the City of Sedgwick and through that area, so adding, we're adding on eight foot of shoulders on each side of the road, as well as easing the, the force slope of the ditches.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because that's one of the issues, I've had a couple constituents call me about that, I drove it the other day. It is, it could be potentially pretty dangerous, I'm sure we all have issues like this in our districts, but how do we know, are we doing traffic counts? Do we know how many people drive that road? Like what is the determination? Because those roads are pretty far out, I mean, we're talking, which, this is kind of hard to read, by the way.
It is a lot of information, yes.
Well, it's not so much the information, it's just what am I looking at first? Is this the Ridge Road shoulders, that's the actual project, and then it talks about? So, R353 and, I'm guessing it's?
354.
5, no, 354, see? Okay, so these two are scheduled for?
So you can see on R333 and 354, those, those sections, those miles of road do about 38,000, or 3,800 and 3,400 cars a day on average.
Okay, and when was that study conducted?
And that would have been based on our 2018 traffic counts. To ask your first question, we do take traffic counts on all our roads every other year. Last year was an exception.
And you said that one was when?
I'm sorry, 2018 was our last count, because last year was an exception, it was going to throw an anomaly, if we would have done the counts, obviously with a lot of people not traveling, when we had done this in the spring and summer, we would have not, we would have gotten counts that didn't make a lot of sense for us. So we were, we are hitting spot locations this year for traffic counts and resuming our normal by year, every other year count in 2022.
So then, the 100,000, help me understand this. So, let's just take R353 for example, so the 75,000 dollars that's in 2022, these are the amounts that are going to be allotted to that project each year?
Yes, so generally with our road project, road and bridge projects, they usually have funds in two to three years from, starting out with design, funding for hiring a consultant for those projects that are consultant design, and then we also have right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation costs, those usually occur in the second year, and then the third or fourth year will be your, and that's the big number, that will be your construction costs.
Okay.
So R353 was actually, is already under design, and that, the 75,000 dollars that is in 2022 is for right-of-way acquisition, to, by the right-of-way, we need to get through that corridor, followed by very early next year, getting, we have utilities that are in private easements up there, we know there's a good chance we're going to end up having to relocate those utilities located, that are located in private easements, which is a cost to us, so we'll get that taken care of, and then followed, and we need to give those utilities time, both those in, in private easements as well as those in the public right-of-way, we need to give them time to relocate those facilities, and then we'll follow that with construction.
So are, are these projects on here in order of safety?
They are not necessarily in order of safety, the projects that are listed in here are going to be listed in order of when they were introduced into the CIP program, so they are in the order of the CIP number. And then the, generally, if we have something that is, something we consider to be a safety issue, that would trump some of these projects and be added in, so instead of adding it at the end of the CIP, it'll be added in, you know, toward the middle or so to allow us some, again, we still need time to design it, move utilities, get things worked around before construction.
Well, if possible, could we get this in an easier-to-understand way that would prioritize it by safety?
I can definitely do my best to get you something that's a little easier to understand and better prioritized.
Okay. Thank you.
I would add that you're saying that things can change, and for sure, economic development items can, can also drive.
Oh, definitely.
So, such as that little plant you got going up, up there in the north.
Yeah, we approved that last week.
I know, but that's how, that's an example of how one can enter in and elevate to the middle or the head of the class.
Correct.
So, okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks for explaining all this to us, it is a lot of information, and I appreciate you trying to explain.
I went through it quickly, I apologize for that, just trying to get us back on schedule here.
I appreciate one of the questions that Commissioner Cruz just asked, and let me just dig in this just a little bit deeper, so the things that are on this list, and the reason they're on this list is because staff has determined that, I didn't say staff, public works staff has determined, these are priorities in terms of our public infrastructure, and, and these are based on what we understand in terms of traffic pressure needs within the county. For example, some of the enhancements that you guys talked about, it's based on like the ethanol plant, for example, or Amazon, okay, that's the one. Those, those are enhancements that are based on those types of pressures. We didn't get, we didn't get a Tyson chicken processing plant, but had we got one, we might have had that on this list, right?
The increased traffic that would have brought, would have, yeah.
But besides those enhancements, everything else on this list is primarily taking care of our current infrastructure, and it's based on, I guess, the, the basic understanding of, of public works staff primarily has driven. of Public Works staff primarily has driven, which items are on this list?
Are you referring like our maintenance projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, those are on, we do those on, we review those every year. We actually do a windshield review, drive them every year. Multiple staff do. And we meet and come up with priorities for what treatments are necessary, if a treatment is necessary, and then what treatment is necessary if it's determined that that treatment is prioritized. And that's how those come together. We start that, we'll actually start that here, probably September timeframe for next year.
I'm probably alone when I say this, but I'll just throw it out there anyway. The R342 program that allowed us to essentially identify a spot in our district that we felt like needs, you know, Commissioner led, help, because we understand what's going on in our own district. And maybe the other Commissioners don't really necessarily perceive that, the importance of that. But I think essentially, we led a project, knowing what's important to our district. I still think that's a good program. I don't think there's support for it. But nevertheless, I do think that was a good thing that, for example, I think hydraulic was paved after Highway 53, I believe, under that program, for example.
That was before my time. I'm not sure.
I mean, I think, you know, Commissioner Norton, I think, picked a mile every, every time he had a chance. And Commissioner O'Donnell finally finished that up, and they made the connection, final connection to Highway 53. And that was, that was a tremendous vision. But there's this idea that if you, if you look at current traffic flow, because these roads aren't currently improved, you may not see the traffic counts that would justify a warranting investment on those things unless you understand how people want to travel around the county. Go ahead, I see he wants to say something. Please do.
I just, we haven't forgotten about that project. And just, the issue there is that we have needed to develop some kind of policy, because we don't have a good selection process to sort of validate that that's a project that should be done county-wide. But we are working on it. Staff has been trying to figure out a scoring scheme or something that we can work with. In fact, we're going to meet on it again tomorrow. And we'll come back and talk to you all about that.
You're talking about
342.
342, okay.
Yeah, or that style. It's not in here. He did talk about the 350, I think, we have as a gravel road for, replacement plan for county roads that are gravel roads, but we haven't addressed for a couple of years, the 342 issue. But
Right. So the difference, of course, the cold-mix roads, of course, have to be maintained every five to seven, maybe even 10 years. Depends on how long, depends on how good they are. But that's the, that's the maintenance side. But what current township roads, gravel roads into paved roads, for example, a Greenwich Road through, through my district, I think, was paved under that program. 143rd Street, same thing. And I think Greenwich, at least at one point, maybe, has been that way. Also, I say Greenwich between 63rd Street and Pawnee, it's, the traffic count on that thing, especially in the morning and the evening, is very high. It's a high-speed road, 55 miles an hour, zero shoulders. In fact, unfortunately, the bicyclists really enjoy that road. And so we have a, we have had people injured on that road, because it's just very narrow, and it's high speed, and there are steep shoulders. Or again, no shoulders, but steep, steep terrain on either side. So if you go off the road, you're going to have a significant accident. And the traffic counts on that road anecdotally feel very, very high. So I'll just say this, as a Commissioner advocating for my district, and I've asked for this before, let me be, let me be very formal in how I'm asking for this today, please hear me. I don't, we have, we have two first-class cities in Sedgwick County. One of them is in Derby. And Derby, you know, is right at 25,000 population now in the surrounding area, if you think about the MSA of just Derby, if you want to use that term. But the idea that who lives around Derby, it's easily 30,000 people live or associate with Derby. And so, and if you add Mulvane, that basically travels through Derby, you can add another 10,000 to that. So we have a pretty significant amount of people traveling from southeast Sedgwick County into Wichita every single day, some of them multiple times a day. And there's really only two ways to get there. That's primarily Rock Road or K-15. And I think that, again, I know this isn't probably exactly fair, and maybe not the way you would look at it, but if you look at the accident data that's available on the sheriff's website, I see one really bright red hotspot for traffic accidents in Sedgwick County that seems to stick out. And that's at 47th K-15. And there seems to be no solution to this problem. And train traffic is still expected, if I understand correctly, to double. These are also our Calendots to Spirit Aerosystems, our biggest employer in the state of Kansas, primarily travels on these roads to get to Spirit Aerosystems. Something that's incredibly important to Sedgwick County. And what I'm seeing is, we don't seem to have plans on how to solve any of these traffic problems. I have said for years that, that public safety, we talked about public safety just a moment ago, public safety is trapped by the train traffic, because trains will stop on 55th Street, you can't get across it. These trains are well over a mile long. They'll stage between 63rd and 47th Street. So when they're stopped there, you can't get past that on 55th. And in terms of the number of traffics, number of trains, I think we're well over 35 to 40 trains a day now, going down that track, and it's expected to go up significantly from there. So we have a fire station and an ambulance post on Oliver and 47th, but they can't get to the Oakland community, for example, because the train traffic is, is very much a problem. I don't see Arc 95 on this list. Again, I know there's a lot of folks out there that are, that are very, very supportive of Arc 95. I am supportive as well. But I think for many of the folks I'm talking about today, they're not going to travel south to go west. So those folks that would normally maybe originate their travel from Derby and head towards Wichita, they're not necessarily going to go to south of 95th Street to cross, to cross the trains. But between Mulvane, until you get to Waterman Street, there's not a way to get past train traffic. And that's, that is a significant item to note. In fact, there's also not that many places to cross the river. So there is a lot of natural barriers out there. And I guess what I've asked for before is, we should do a study to find out what's our long-term plan to solve some of the traffic pressures on Rock Road and this issue of 47th K-15. I would love to see something, some plan that says we're going to study this and come up with some ideas. I know it's complicated.
So to be clear, K-15 is a state highway, and they drive everything that happens along that corridor. And the railroads are the railroads. We participate every possible opportunity with KDOT to try to fix something on K-15. WAMPO recently funded a traffic coordination project, signal coordination project on the whole K-14, K-15 corridor. But it's got to be driven by KDOT.
I understand it, but where's your advocacy? We advocated hard, you know, a couple of years ago, the North Junction wasn't even on our list. Here we are already, now we're already going into several phases on the North Junction. And that wasn't even on the list a few years ago. So I understand, you know, President Biden is talking about infrastructure projects. In fact, I would ask, out of this list, which of these are shovel-ready? Might be another good discussion to find out which items could be catapulted forward, if there was infusion of infrastructure funds available from this, from the federal government. But with respect to these issues I'm talking about right now, we haven't even started, we haven't even checked the first box. I don't even see there's advocacy from anybody talking about what we're going to do to solve, to do to solve these problems. And Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Cruz and I had a kind of a discussion, I think it was just yesterday, talked about how we spend money in Sedgwick County. I want to just point out, I'm having a hard time understanding why we'd even vote for this, because it's a nice proposal, but simple, and let me formally request, I'd like to have this project, this list redone with a breakout of spending per district, okay? I'll just say this, that may not be accurate, but I see here that there are, in District Number One, there's five projects listed. In District Number Two, there's eight projects listed. In District Number Four, there's four projects listed. In District Number Three, there's 14 projects listed. And District Number Five, my district, my district, there's one project listed. If I subtract out the all district, all district spending, less than 6% of the spending on this list, less than 6%, yeah, less than 6% of the spending on this list relates to District Number Five. And that includes the 63rd Street project that I'll share with District Number Two, a bridge over the Arkansas River. So if I subtract that one, you know, I split that between Commissioner Lopez and myself, I essentially have $2.7 million worth of spending that relates to District Five out of $109 million. Now, that's not quite fair, because roughly $63 million of this is all districts. So again, that leaves about $45 million of spending. But out of $45 million of spending, 2.7 of that is District Number Five. Now, that's just, I may be off my numbers a little bit. That's just me trying to figure this out. I always want to say once again, that we have 1/5 of the population in the smallest geographic area, and they use very few roads to get around. So I recognize I have a significant problem down south, and I have no idea how we're going to solve these problems right now. And I don't see anybody advocating for a study to figure this out. So let me request, yet again, I've requested this at WAMPO, I requested it from our former Director of Public Works, and I'm requesting it out to you. And Mr. Manager, I don't want to lose this again. I'm going to continue to advocate for this. And I have to continue to be strong on this, because that's my job as a Commissioner of my district. And I have a few other comments, but I can see people want to talk just for a second. And I maybe, I actually have a couple of questions going forward. Want me to pause for just, do you have any comments you want to make?
No, I understand everything you're saying. I would say, I want to go back a second. One of the, there's kind of a, not a real good system for the public to, it'd be easy for the public to tell us what they need, but they don't tend to do that. They tend to contact Commissioners. And so some of the things that Commissioner Cruz has brought up, literally the Ridge Road projects are on there because people contacted Richard Ransaw at the time and said, we think there's a problem. And then we go look at it. And so it's, it's an important part of the feedback loop. But for some reason, our phone number's out there, county website's out there, everything's out there. But we tend to get this kind of safety feedback through you. So when you get that, pass it on, and we go look at those things. We try to keep track of everything, but it's not necessarily hearing what citizens think they need. So sometimes they're not valid, but sometimes they really are.
Let me just be clear, what I envision as a, again, these may be pipe dreams, maybe it's completely un, maybe these will never happen. But I envision an overpass at 47th Street and K-15 that would get, get traffic over the trains. And maybe it's crazy, but I would love to see something at least thought through. I think Rock Road needs to be, Rock Road should be expanded. There's five miles from Derby to South Wichita. That needs to be expanded and improved. I think there should be safety enhancements along Rock Road corridor. And I know that the south loop, again, we talk about Arc 95 being a bridge over the river at 95th Street South, but really it's meridian to, it's meridian down from Kellogg South to 95th Street, 95th Street meridian, from there to Greenwich and, to Greenwich and 95th Street South, and then from there back to Kellogg on Greenwich. Perhaps, we ought to talk about expanding Greenwich between Pawnee and 63rd Street South as a, as a way to relieve some pressure off of Rock Road. I know that's a long-term vision for that south loop, but that might be way, one way to say we would improve some of our safety issues along Greenwich and pull some pressure, move it to the east away from Rock Road right now. There seems to be no other solution on Rock Road that I can think of. So those are just three ideas. And then, and then, I'll just say this, if we, if we, if we make our decisions based on current, current traffic flows, it may not really envision exactly what's really going on here. Some communities, they, they build roads before the traffic flows happen, because they understand, I guess, the needs for these roads that currently don't exist. And so the idea is that if you build it, they will come. I think we can move pressure to places that makes more sense, not necessarily based on current traffic counts, because some of these roads don't exist currently that will handle these types of traffic counts. Greenwich is not going to have the traffic right now that Rock Road has currently. But if you improved the Greenwich Road between 63rd Street and Kellogg, I think, or Pawnee, I think you would see significant pressure move from Rock Road to the east, probably, and would justify that type of investment. So that's, I've said a lot, I'll just, I'll sit back and say, thanks again for all you do.
Thank you.
But I don't, right now, I don't have a lot of reason to vote for this. Thank you.
I don't think we're voting on that. Are we, are we voting today? Oh, we will, but we're not voting today.
You'll see a full CIP package with the budget, and you'll vote on that whole, if I said this right. You'll all see all that and vote on all that as part of the budget down the road, quite a ways.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. If we do get approved for the congressional funding for some of these projects, what do you think the timeline would be on some of those? For instance, the Clearwater Bridge?
So all the projects that we've submitted, and Commissioner Howe, you know, was asking a question about shovel-ready projects. Everything we submitted is essentially shovel-ready or going to be within a year, 18 months. I think the difficulty is, we're not sure what the timeline is for how the projects that a Congressman might have put on the list to be considered, how those kind of actually get out into legislation and get approved. But we're, these are all projects that we continue to work on. They will become more shovel-ready as time goes by. And so we just try to be there. We are also looking ahead, because we're in kind of a different world than we were 18 months ago. And we're having the conversation about what are the next, what's the next round of things we need to go for. If we hit one or two of these, you know, what's next if it comes up again? What are we going to do? And so we are looking ahead to try to get that sort of actionable list put together of things that we can act on. And we're, I'm just going to say it, we're kind of district-blind on this. To us, it's one big system, and we're trying to take care of the whole system. And so we're intending to submit the projects that are most likely to succeed. And the benefit of that is, it saves us from using county funds to do that project, and we move that on to the next, you know, our sales tax doesn't go away. It's savings, it goes into reserve, we find the next project, we redo the CIP, and we move other things forward. So we're not trying to focus on location as much as what works, what's, what's going to score points.
Can I just have one more question? And I apologize if you've already mentioned this. But I have had a few people reach out about the road in Clearwater, just because that cotton's, I mean, it's going to be done pretty soon. Do we know when that road potentially will be finished for them?
You're referring to the 95th Street improvements?
Yes.
That will be constructed next year. So by the end of next year, we haven't scheduled the actual letting of that project, but it should be end of 2022, beginning of 2023 timeframe, if I remember correctly. Let me look that one up. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Don't see any other comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm back. You all look excited. Okay, I'll go fast. And just a quick update on the schedule, just so you all know, because we are running a bit behind, we'll be moving MAPD and HR to after lunch. And we'll just go straight into IT as soon as this presentation wraps up. So we are going to talk about the funding plan. How exactly are we going to pay for all of the projects you've just heard? Most of this shouldn't come as much of a surprise, but you'll see it all in one nice container. So just to refresh her real quick on the debt policy that the county has adopted, there are still some tweaks and research that's being done. I've reached out to our municipal advisor about some of the questions that were asked at the February workshop. So hopefully we'll have maybe some revisions to this before long. But for now, the policy preferences for pay-as-you-go, meaning cash, versus debt funding. The policy does establish a formal structure for how we do our debt issuance. It prohibits the use of debt to fund operations. It establishes multiple benchmarks, which we've talked about. And as we talked about it, and as the chairman lauded the other day, we do have a nice provision of our policy that says that we try and pay off 30% of our principal in the first five years, 60% in the first 10 years. And so that leaves 40% to be paid off over the last 10 years, which reduces the overall costs of the program. And of course, we have specific guidelines that we follow when we issue debt. Now, recently, we've had some discussion about fund balance. And I've told you, we can't use fund balance for ongoing costs. We can't use it for operational costs, similar to debt. So what can we use it for? Well, we can use it to pay for capital projects. And so with the pent-up demand that we have from 2021, and not funding as many as we thought we might need, just because we didn't know what the impact of COVID would be, Lynn referenced that reduction in sales tax projects, because we did not think our sales tax would say where it was. So that is what you'll see in some of this, is a heavier use of cash. Maybe in earlier years, we do know we have a robust fund balance, and that's okay. So looking at our five-year CIP, this takes all of the information you've just heard and puts it into one slide. So you can see that this project proposal includes funding $83.2 million worth of facilities, drainage, and road and bridge projects with cash, the bulk of which, that's $70 million, the local sales tax portion. Again, we get, you know, our fair share of 1%, half of that goes into the general fund, basically to offset property tax. The other half goes into the Public Works Road and Bridge program. Another $55.4 million goes to debt, of which the bulk is actually on the facility side. And then there's about $22.5 million worth of other, again, mostly on that road and bridge side. bridge side. So altogether, the program that you have heard today is just under $161 million over five years. So some pretty good investment in our infrastructure. So what does that look like for debt service? We know that this is always a hot topic. Of course, you remember from last week when we talked about bonded interests, we have some significant debt falling off. That slide is later in this presentation. But for now, this is the new debt coming on. So you can see that for the concare and health program that was included today, that's about $19.7 million collectively of debt. We would expect to pay over 20 years an average annual amount of about 1.3 million in debt service. The courthouse complex, all that stuff we talked about at the adult detention facility and the main courthouse together totals 3.5 million. $230,000 would be our annual debt service and about, and you can see that portion that would be paid for 911 tax. Now, I'm not going to go line by line here because you can read it. But you can see the bolded numbers each year, next to the year, include the grand total of estimated new debt service we plan to have come on. So what does that mean for our bottom line? That's what all of this matters. Now, don't get too scared because of this slide, okay? There's a lot of red, but it gets better on the next slide. So what is the impact on cash funding to the general fund? You can see that coming into this, from the forecast you heard last Wednesday, we expected general fund deficits of the amounts listed in that top row. This cash funding scenario but for 2025 makes this deficit worse. And you can see what the new deficit is with this program loaded. Now, I promise you it's going to get better. Here's where it gets better. We have made a lot of changes on the debt-funded side, including that admin building that was very expensive. So you'll see a lot of black. So instead of having a deficit of 386 thou, or I'm sorry, a surplus of $386,000 in 2023 in that top row for the fund balance change for the bonded interest fund, we actually think we're going to add $145,000 to that surplus so that our surplus is actually going to be $667,000. Because we're also going to be bringing money, we talked about the solid waste fund, talked about the 911 tax fund, those would help pay the debt service. Well, that's going to be new revenue to that bonded interest fund. And so when we take all of that together, the forecast in one, in this particular property tax-supported fund improves by 2.3 million net. So on the prior slide, it got worse. On this slide, it gets better. And then basically, the bottom line is on your handout, the one that looks like this. If you go to page two, and if you look at row 66, the very bottom line on this lovely piece of paper, you'll see that the net impact is actually positive to the forecast. What we have put in front of you today improves your forecast to the tune of 2.3 million over the life of the next five years. Again, a large part of that is because that very large admin building project came out. So just a reminder quickly on what is falling off in the next few years. This is really more for reference. We already talked about this last week. We know exploration place and big road and bridge debt, Juvenile Justice Complex, the Public Safety Building, all of those things will be coming off. We also know that in the not-too-distant future, we will have the spirit debt service and the NCAT debt service paid off too. So if there's any interest, we've done, we've looked at the debt capacity, we have enormous debt capacity still over in excess of $100 million even with this plan. So not encouraging us to use that, but just it's nice to know that it's there in case desperate situation arises. So that is the proposed tentative CIP. We will welcome your feedback in the coming days so that we can make sure that we incorporate that in your presentation that you see in July, to the extent possible where we can get consensus from the commission. So any questions I can answer.
Okay, I don't see any right now. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all for bearing with us. I will ask Mr. Elpers. Oh, wait. Oh, Lord. I tried.
I need to get back to Commissioner Howell's question about D-21. And we're tight. I mean, I'm okay if we want to just put 10 minutes on a staff meeting some morning to do that one. It probably will be a little bit more conversation if you want to try to fit in here. But, okay.
Okay, our next presentation is the Division of Information and Technology on page 288 of your binders. And Mike Elpers will be presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Elpers, your interim Chief Information Officer and E R P Director. This morning, I'll be presenting the 2022 Proposed Budget for the Division of Information Technology. Attending with me again is Mr. Greg Gann, the Business Solutions Group Director, and Mr. Joe Courier, the I T Infrastructure Director. They will both help me answer any questions you may have or provide any information, any additional information you may need with regards to the I T departments and the budget we've developed. Our division's mission is to provide technology services in the most cost-efficient, cost-efficient manner. We strive to deliver customer service that exceeds the expectations of our customers, and we fully support the overall mission of our organization to provide quality public services to our citizens and community. This is the mission statement for all four departments within the Division of I T. Overall, I T is composed of 74.5 FTEs in four departments, all funded with taxpayer dollars out of the general fund. Here's just a simple visualization of our org chart. Again, 74.5 FTEs all paid from the general fund. As I mentioned, we break down into four departments. So the first is the Director's Office, which is basically the administration of the division made up of three FTEs. B S G, or Business Solutions Group, which includes our programmers, project managers, application managers, and database administrators, made up of 32 FTEs. I T Infrastructure, which is the support team for the underlying technical infrastructure, made up of 27.5 FTEs. And E R P, or Enterprise Resource Planning, which is a team of 12 FTEs who support all of the county E R P systems. First, we'll talk about the Director's Office. This, like I said, this is pretty much the administrative department of the division. We perform all administrative tasks for each of the division's employees, as well as administer the 13 cost centers within I T. Department consists of three full-time FTEs, all internal staff. For our director, for our challenges and opportunities today and over the next five years, we have several challenges, including dealing with a workforce that no longer offices in buildings downtown. Pretty much all I T has been remote for over a year now. And getting used to that has been and will continue to be a little bit of a challenge for us. I think we've done a good job recruiting talented individuals for employment, still trying to fill a couple of vacancies. And of course, we're assuming we're able to find qualified employees. It's always been kind of a struggle to retain them and to develop qualified employees. You know, pretty much all companies now have realized that they're, pretty much all companies have an I T department, and they've realized that now that those I T employees don't necessarily need to be in their offices. So it makes it a little easier for some of those larger companies to recruit talent if they, they don't have to stay, if they don't have to just look locally. So that's become a little bit more of a competition for us. As far as opportunities for the Director's Office, I'd say our biggest opportunity is to increase the way our organization leverages the technology we already have in place. For example, our enterprise document imaging system has and will continue to allow departments to move from paper processes to digital ones. So much has been accomplished over the last year for departments leveraging our website or E-line. Many, many paper processes have moved online now. Enterprise reporting systems allow departments the ability to share information or see how their own performance metrics relate to employee costs or department expenditures. And finally, cloud systems and mobile apps give our employees options for faster and more efficient, efficient business process, processes, whether they be in the office, at home, or anywhere in between. A lot of progress has been made here, but much more progress awaits. I also think a good opportunity is to try and remove some of the peaks and valleys from our division's spend. This is kind of difficult to do following the licensing and purchasing models we've followed to date. But software licensing models are changing, and software and software systems are changing. And we will look for ways to move from large capital purchases to more operational purchases, try and make our spending a little bit more predictable. Finally, we're in the midst of an I T assessment with the local accounting firm, B K D. This began back in March. We've, we've provided them with a lot of information on our project management approach, our operational approach, our technical processes, our change management. They're reviewing our documentation and will come on site the week of Memorial Day for interviews with many of our I T staff. Their final report, they will, they provide will include assessments of several areas of I T, the level of risk associated with any gaps they identify in their analysis, as well as a prioritized list of scope and remediation efforts. The Director's Office has no decision package, no decision packages or alternate reductions or revenue packages to submit. Here you see the dollar amounts associated with the personnel, contractuals, and commodities for this department. Small increase in the overall budget for the department, but the big picture will show an overall decrease for the division. The next department to discuss today is the Business Solutions Group, or B S G. B S G is comprised of five programs supporting departmental applications, enterprise applications, custom applications that we build, as well as those we buy. B S G also supports our citizens and community through public-facing websites and applications, as well as external agencies such as the City of Wichita and other municipalities, fire and police stations, and others. The services of B S G are in the areas of geographic information services, internet services, I T development and project management, database administration, and document management. All of this is done with internal staff, although some external staff is leveraged when it's appropriate to do so. This is the largest of our departments containing 32 FTEs. Some of the challenges B S G faces are dealing with the technology changes made at the state level or changes at other agencies that affect the business processes of, of our departments or data our departments consume to accomplish their goals. Prime example of this is the Odyssey system being implemented at the state of Kansas. B S G has devoted a lot of resources to attempt to make the transition to Odyssey as smooth as possible. Of course, the pandemic really changed our operations and continues to require, to require I T resources to address it. I mentioned some of the departmental processes that we've moved from, that have moved from paper to online in the past year, and this transition continues throughout the organizations. Another challenge is that several departments of our organization are implementing large software packages or upgrading existing software packages, or simply keeping the lights on for systems to stay, for systems going through patch cycles. So not all departments have siloed systems, which is a good thing, but keeping those interfaces up and operational as the departments up, go through major upgrades or patch, even patch schedules for their softwares can be a challenge. Similar to the Director's Office, B S G also continues to see opportunities to leverage some of our organization's enterprise applications to digitize processes or address manual, manual or inefficient processes. This can also help, can help departments share information when appropriate or add convenience and new online functionality for our citizens. Business Solutions Group has no decision packages, alternative reductions, or revenue packages to submit. Here you see the B S G summary for 2022 costs for personnel, contractuals, and commodities, with only small variances from 2021. The third department is I T Infrastructure. This is the underlying, behind-the-scenes, for, for the most part, technology infrastructure of the organization, the backbone, if you will, upon which all technology systems run and are accessed for the county. I T Infrastructure supports all computer workstations, printers, multifunction devices, networks, network cabling, communications equipment like switches and routers, I T security equipment like firewalls and encryption devices, as well as all communication systems such as email and phones. Enterprise storage and backup and three main data centers are also maintained by this group. I T Infrastructure breaks down into three main areas or programs. First, help desk for centralized end-user support and support of our desktop computers and peripherals. System administration and telecommunications for servers, storage arrays, phone systems, and call centers. And the third is I T security and networking for both local and wide-area network support and support of both perimeter and internal security systems. Department consists of 27.5 FTEs, all internal. The challenges and opportunities for I T Infrastructure are very similar to the other, what other departments, what other I T departments are seeing. Our biggest challenge is the ever-changing and evolving security threats and keeping our data safe and secure from breach. This is our number-one priority and our number-one challenge. Data, data continues to grow exponentially, and finding places to store it and back it up is a big challenge. Software licensing models and just software in general is always a challenge, especially as the software vendors change their approaches to licensing models and requirements for updating and upgrading to stay within supported maintenance windows. And finally, data centers and specifically the equipment to support data centers in terms of power for power distribution units, backup power, uninterruptible power supplies, and climate control systems or air handler units. These seem to age quickly and are very expensive to maintain and replace. Opportunities exist, however. There are some good local resources for keeping staff up to date with the latest I T security trends and best practices. Knowing what's going on in this area of information technology, staying up to date on new trends is really the key to being successful. Due to the pandemic, a lot of departments' initiatives to move things to a digital interface, there's a big opportunity to provide them a platform with state-of-the-art capabilities to be able to support all of these initiatives. Definitely an opportunity, but also a challenge to provide this at an approachable cost. Very little change in terms of the 2022 requested budget for I T Infrastructure, and I T Infrastructure has no decision packages, alternative reductions, or revenue packages to submit. The fourth and final I T department is the Enterprise Resource Planning, or E R P. E R P supports all the county S A P systems, which at a very high level can be broken down into three main areas. Those which process all financial-related transactions, including accounting, procurement, budget, accounts payable, accounts receivable, revenue management, and others. Those which process all H R transactions, including the hiring process, and all internal H R-related actions, personnel records, benefits, promotions, leave of absence. And the third is enterprise analytics, supporting data warehousing, dashboarding, and ad hoc and scheduled report generation and distribution. E R P services are for the most part provided by 12 FTEs, all internal staff. However, we do have some external support resources on contract for other daily, monthly, quarterly, and annual tasks. By far, E R P's biggest challenge in the future will be to implement a new financial system, if approved, next year. We've been planning for this for over three years now and working on it for the last two or so. It'll be a big change for our organization, and our goal is to make that transition to the new system as least disruptive as possible. That finance system, along with the H R system we implemented last year, are both cloud systems, but we still have to deal with the continued upgrades, patching, and hardware of our on-premise systems, the servers in our data centers. Keeping informed of those software releases, evaluating the new functionality that, that becomes available with them, and just the coordination of applying those updates is a challenge for E R P. Some large opportunities exist. From the reporting and analytics capabilities within E R P, we've recently added two tools to our toolbox for visualizing that data. The first is geographically, and then publishing, public-facing dashboards and other content. These are being used currently in a couple areas of our organization, but we believe they would benefit several others as we continue to build content with them. And finally, the new cloud systems for finance and H R. These things get automatically updated throughout the year, so taking advantage of the new functionality that comes out in those updates is a good opportunity for E R P. We've already done this a couple times with the H R system. It'll be interesting to see what kind of new processes and technologies we can bring into the financial processes once we get that system implemented. E R P resource, or E R, Enterprise Resource Planning has no decision packages, alternative reductions, or revenue packages to submit. Here you see the dollar amounts associated with personnel, contractuals, and commodities for the department. You see a small increase in personnel for the department, but overall, the change for the department is down 3%. but overall, the change for the department is down 3%. Here's the summary for all departments within the division. Reductions for all departments except the Director's Office, which is only a modest increase. And again, no decision packages, alternative reductions, or revenue packages to submit for the division. And with that, I will, my colleagues and I are happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mike. Commissioner Lopez.
I just have a question with programs like Odyssey and when the state has us do certain things, are they helping in any way to integrate those with what we have? Or are they doing anything to help us, or is that just solely on the county to?
I'll let Mr. Gann speak to that, Paul, but his team has been working very hard on that.
Good morning. Greg Gann, IT Business Solutions Director. We've had a longstanding partnership with the state of Kansas, District Court 18, and of course, our partners at Wichita, at the Police Department, Court Trustees, all working together to plan appropriately for this big transition from full court. It's been around 16-plus years, reaching end of life and going into the new Odyssey cloud system. There's been a tremendous amount of discovery. I'm in direct communications with Kelly O'Brien, the Chief Information Technology Officer for the Office of Judicial Administration, who is leading the project for Odyssey. The work that our development team has been doing to dovetail all of that Odyssey data into the DA's Just Where case system has been very productive. We're very close. Through negotiations, we've been able to push the timelines out. The original timelines were unrealistic. They've recognized this. There've been some problems with Odyssey that they're working on. I think things are moving in a positive direction. We're still projected to go live with this in the spring of next year, so about May 1st. It's a long, arduous process, but we've had agreeable partners. I feel confident that we'll do well.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I would just say, I'm, you know, I'm really happy to hear all the integration that we're trying to do and streamlining of different things. I think that'll be really helpful going forward, so thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Just comment, Mike. Thank you for the presentation. Your speaking skills are very articulate and well, so that'll do you good for your upcoming wedding.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, okay.
Commissioners, that's our last presentation we'll have this morning. We have a break until 1:00.
Okay, thank you.